Welcome you to the Middletown, is this working? Yeah, thank you. I call to order and welcome you to the Middletown, Ohio Regular City Council Meeting for Tuesday, December 17th, 2024. Please join me for a moment of meditation followed by the Pledge of Allegiance to the American Flag. You will hear three taps of the gavel when it is time to stand. Thank you. Please join me in a moment of meditation now. Clerk of Council, Mrs. Amy Skank, please call the attendance roll.
Mr. Lawling.
Present.
Mrs. Carter. Mr. West.
Here.
Mr. Horn.
Here.
Mayor Slampa.
Here.
First on the agenda this evening is a presentation of the Cardiac Save Award from Premier Health and Atrium Medical Center to the Middletown Division of Fire. I would like to invite EMS Captain Andy Turner to the podium.
My pleasure to be here. Again, good evening. My name's Karen Ward. I'm one of the EMS coordinators at Premier. I strictly work at Atrium Medical Center. And here with me was supposed to be Dr. Ambergy, she should be coming, and then also Molly Hurst, which, hi, which is our service line manager, so. It's an absolute pleasure for me to be here today to recognize the outstanding efforts displayed by the Middletown Fire Department during a cardiac arrest. The quick and effective efforts of the Fire Department sustained the life of Mr. Vincent Todd Savada as they expediently transported him to Atrium Medical Center for further lifesaving intervention. What we know of that day, Medic 81 and Engine 81 were dispatched to Willie's Pub and Billiards at 1613 Germantown Road in Middletown for a male in cardiac arrest. The crews were advised that Mr. Savada had collapsed on the floor and a bystander was performing CPR. He was found to not have a pulse and the crew swiftly started CPR and was breathing for him. He was in a lethal heart rhythm and Middletown Fire Department defibrillated him to help the heart start again. During transport to the hospital, the crew intubated, defibrillated him three more times, and gave him cardiac arrest medication. After all this care, the crew found Mr. Savada had a pulse and took him into the atrium for further critical care. After a quick minute and a half arrival time upon dispatch, Middletown crew started care at approximately 9:43 PM and when they arrived on scene, and he was in the hands of Atrium Medical Center at approximately 10:00 PM. He underwent a cardiac catheterization where two cardiac artery stents were placed in his left side of his heart and his arteries. The stent was successful, which allowed regular circulation to return to the area of the heart. He was in the hospital for only nine days and discharged home. He has since continued with cardiac rehabilitation. The reason for us celebrating today is the fact that of the roughly 356,000 out-of-hospital cardiac arrests that occur annually in the United States, nearly 90% of them are fatal. In fact, the annual incidence of out-of-hospital cardiac arrests is approximately 55 per 100,000 incidents, most of which occur in the home or a workplace. This is a point that I would like to stress the importance of the bystander CPR. Quick effective CPR is critical in the chain of survival and played a very critical role in his survival and positive outcome. And as a sign of our thanks, the Premier EMS Center of Excellence would like to present each member of the Middletown Fire Department Crew that performed lifesaving interventions our Mr. Savada and a Cardiac Save Challenge coin and a certificate. And after that, I would like to invite anybody else who would like to speak. So, the crew wants to come up? And Mr.? And Todd? We have Emma? Zachary Dapper? You're not Zach. Thank you, though. Zachary Pinkleton? Bryce Narker? You're welcome. And let me get it open. John Isakuno? And then Todd would like to shake his hand. Todd, would you like to say anything?
These guys are heroes and I got a lot to live for and I appreciate them. And I got boys, I got four boys, five grandkids, and without them, I wouldn't be here. And there's not enough words to say thanks, or there's nothing I can do to show it except try to be a good person and do what's right. So, thanks, you guys. I appreciate it.
Anybody else want to comment? Dr. Ambergy, will he be coming down? Dr. Ambergy is their medical director.
This is Dr. Ambergy, Medical Director.
Thank you very much for allowing me to speak. You've heard the presentations, you've heard the data. We like to make a big deal of these situations because you've heard how rare this occurrence is. So, to simplify the data, you know, nine times out of 10, these situations, cardiac arrests, they're fatal for patients, unfortunately. So, anytime that we have a save like this, and by save, as emergency physician, I mean a survival to complete and full neurological outcome. They wake up, they're functional. If there was ever a situation to prove to you that your job matters, he's standing right back there. Every single cardiac arrest that you go to, you always work to the best of your ability, assuming this is going to happen, the best-case scenario. And when we come and we give these presentations and awards to you, that is a reminder of why you do your best every single day. I know he's grateful, I know they're grateful, I'm grateful, and I'm very proud of the work that you did. So, congratulations, it's well deserved.
Thank you all. Did anybody else want to say any words? Well, thank you very much. The next item on the agenda is the public hearing. Just curious, though, did we want to switch things up? Can we switch things up and do public or citizen comments first? Is that a possibility? Or just keep going with the agenda as it is?
Yeah, you can do whatever you want.
How does council feel about that? Did you want to do citizen comments first or just go straight forward to the public agenda, public hearing?
How many do we have?
We have 15 citizen comments.
Up to you.
Up to me?
Yeah, sure.
All right.
We actually received another citizen comment. I laid it on my desk there.
Go with the comments, okay. We'll switch the agenda then and go with the citizen comments, just in case people have to leave, if that makes sense. You have to leave? Yes, okay, gotcha. All right. All right. Does that work with everyone?
Yeah.
Yes, okay. So, now we will go ahead and move to the citizen comment portion of the evening. And so, just let me go ahead and read here. The next word of business is citizen comments. A professional presentation is expected. This is not the time for debate, questions and answer, or any back-and-forth conversation. This is a time for you, our residents, to be able to present to council on record, uninterrupted, and have the floor. We have received 16 comment cards this evening. I will prompt each speaker for their next steps when they reach the podium. I would like to call Jeff Payne to the podium. Please adjust and speak directly into the microphone.
I'm actually speaking on the presentation.
Oh, then you didn't need to submit this. So, you can, you can, you can sit down then.
Oh, thank you.
Unless you wanted to say anything for four minutes. No?
I'll reserve it to them.
Okay, we'll skip that one. Anybody else who was thinking about, okay, so I'll just keep going. I would now like to invite Mary Johnson to the podium. Please adjust the microphone for yourself and speak directly into it. First, please state your full name and Middletown residence, work address, or interest in the city for the record.
Hello, my name is Mary Begavish Johnson and I live at 6700 Locust Lane.
Okay, and let's let the clock reset before we start.
Okay.
I'm gonna give, okay, please proceed.
I am the current Chair of the DMI Board of Directors. All of us at DMI are all volunteer board of directors. Our staff and our army of volunteers are dedicated to the revitalization of downtown Middletown. My husband and I moved to Middletown 34 years ago, and this is where we raised our two daughters. We chose Middletown because we wanted to live in a unique city with a strong history rather than a suburb of Cincinnati or Dayton. We currently live in Burnham Woods, close to the I-75 corridor. We're very excited about the plans on both sides of the highway that will bring more people to Middletown. However, as a city, we need to continue to invest in downtown revitalization. We passionately believe in our historic downtown. It's important because it's the heart of Middletown, and having a healthy heart is essential to having a strong hometown community and a strong city. We absolutely love the sense of community that we have in downtown Middletown. Everywhere we go, we know the business owners and we are likely to run into friends, friends we first met while downtown. It is special and something that you won't find in Austin Landing or Liberty Center. And that makes Middletown unique, something that our friends from outside Middletown constantly recognize and remark on with envy. Creating a vibrant downtown doesn't happen in a vacuum. It takes dedication, know-how, time, money, and effort from a multitude of organizations and army of volunteers. DMI is dedicated to continuously building a stronger and stronger downtown community. We are a 365 days a year organization. If a new business opens downtown, we are one of the first organizations to visit them and ask them how we can help them to succeed. Our year-round calendar events, including First Fridays, Women's Wine and Chocolate Walk, and our upcoming Blitzing Cocktail and Cookie Walk are thoughtfully and purposefully designed to bring people downtown and into our businesses, even on days like this Saturday when the high will be 31 degrees. When we see an opportunity to promote Middletown, DMI puts time, money, and resources against it. The DORA guides we shared with you, you all have them by you, are an example of that. DMI pays to design and print the tear-off guides and uses volunteers to hand-deliver them to over 60 locations across Middletown, including the hotels and gyms along the I-75 corridor. The hotels have been especially positive regarding the benefits to their guests of having a map of downtown businesses and a QR code link to the DMI Events webpage. Thank you to the mayor, city council, and the city of Middletown staff for your continued support for DMI and for downtown revitalization. The city is an extremely important source of funds for DMI. As operating costs have grown over the years, the city's financial support for DMI has remained the same since 2013. Consequently, our fundraising efforts and activities have taken a greater share of time and energy that could be better spent on downtown revitalization activities. We're requesting funding increases from the city of Middletown for 2025 that help provide us with the financial stability to achieve our mission of revitalizing our beloved downtown. Details to follow. DMI is also proud to have the support of foundations, business owners, individual donors, and patrons who invest significant dollars so that we can implement the events, programs, initiatives that are building up our downtown. Thank you to all of our supporters and thank you for your time.
Thank you, Ms. Johnson. I would like, now like to call Sylvia McIntosh to the podium. Please adjust the microphone and speak directly into the microphone. First, please state your full name and Middletown residence, work address, or interest in the city for the record.
My name is Sylvia McIntosh. I live at 111 North Sutfin Street here in Middletown.
And just one moment, we're gonna reset the clock so you have the full four minutes.
Yeah. Oh, okay.
Okay, please proceed.
All right. Although I've lived in Middletown longer than I've lived at that house, and we have owned that property for 20 years, and I was really excited to move to Middletown at the time that I did because the roof had just come off the mall and things were starting to happen downtown. They were in the very, very early stages. The Mormons were working on their building and had made it so beautiful and were working on bringing other people down. It was exciting to me to get to be in a community during their Renaissance, which seemed to continue for a while, and then it dwindled as resistance to progress seemed to be increasing from the government aspect of the city. At times, it felt like ego issues, so I don't really know what the problem was, but cooperation is really the key to downtown Middletown Incorporated being a Main Street America program. The whole purpose of DMI is the downtown area. So, we have a very limited area we are focusing on, and I realize you guys are working on a much larger area, but we could help you if you would let us do more with the little area that we cover. And it's not just the money, as Mary mentioned, it's the cooperation, it's the legislation. I know recently you guys did this marvelous clean sweep to get all the code violations, and you picked on all the homeowners, and that's all fixed, and nothing has changed downtown. All the vacant properties that were there and falling down are still there and still falling down, so I'd really love to see increased cooperation toward an effective vacant property legislation, which is something DMI can help with, in part because of Jeff's background as a city employee for years, his degree as a city planner, and the fact that he is the executive director for DMI, which is a Main Street program, and it's a part of Heritage Ohio, all of which have resources on how other communities are effectively dealing with vacant, derelict, dangerous property. So, I would love to see you guys get on board and really get behind what DMI is trying to do with you and for you and work on building that cooperation. I think DMI's done an amazing job. I've been a volunteer, excuse me, I've been a volunteer with them since 2011. I helped with the first Women's Wine and Chocolate Walk, and I, then I ran the Thunderfest program for eight years as the event coordinator, and I put that kind of time into this organization because I love what they're doing. I think Middletown's a pretty awesome place, and this is a part of the Renaissance, so hoping we can get your support and understanding about what we are doing. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. McIntosh. I would next like to call Dennis Fattori to the podium. Please adjust the microphone for yourself and speak directly into the microphone. And first, please state your full name, Middletown residence, work address, or interest in the city for the record.
I'm Dennis Fattori. Our building we own is the Torchlight Pass Building, the old J.C. Penney Building, 1131 Central Avenue. I'm a lifelong resident of Middletown, Ohio.
Okay, and let's start the four, four minutes, please. Wait, hold on. Thank you, please proceed.
I've been involved with Downtown Middletown, Inc. for seven years, past chairman of Downtown Middletown, Inc. We're involved in all the downtown businesses. We put on numerous events. Our Women Wine and Chocolate is one of our premier events, bringing in 700, 900 women who have a tendency to spend money breakfast, lunch, dinner, after dinner, bring their husbands down. It's our biggest event. We own Gracie's Restaurant. That day, we had 233 people, which is the most people we've ever had at our restaurant. Middletown also was the first DORA in the state of Ohio. We were one of the first Main Street cities in the state of Ohio. There are currently 24 Main Street cities in the state. Our DMI events, not to reiterate, we have First Fridays, we have numerous Saturday events. As I mentioned, the Women Wine and Chocolate is one of our premier events, the Hocus Pocus, which is for the kids at Halloween. DMI's main goal is to bring people downtown and to help our downtown businesses. Our mission is fostering pride, revitalization of downtown Middletown, and we also were involved in 2016 in putting together the strategic plan for downtown Middletown. Some things have been accomplished, there's numerous things on the list. As I said, I've been involved in downtown. We have a great passion for downtown. One thing, we just, for your information, rented our restaurant space today, so hopefully we'll have another revitalization part of downtown and bringing more people to our restaurant and to downtown. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Fattori. Next, I would like to call Nancy Griffith to the podium. And please adjust the microphone and speak directly into the microphone. First, please state your full name and Middletown residence, work address, or interest in the city for the record.
My name's Nancy Griffith. I'm here on behalf of the Sorg Opera Revitalization Group. Our address is 63 South Main Street.
Thank you, and we'll let the clock reset to four minutes. Please proceed.
Hi, guys. I just wanted to touch base with you. Jeff is gonna do a little presentation later that may involve us. I know from the outside, it's really hard to tell that we've done some stuff to the building, but on the inside, there's been great progress made. Lobby renovation is underway. We're getting ready to put in much-needed insulation for the lobby. Our furnace, our lobby furnace went out, and of course, the coldest day of the year, we had to replace the lobby furnace, so it really looks like on the outside, nothing much has changed, but if you come inside, you can definitely tell the difference. And I just wanted to kind of keep you up to date on what's going on. We did, thanks to a partnership with our friends at the Plaza Theater in Miami'sburg, they received a new digital projector. They gave us a great deal on their old digital projector. So, their old digital projector came our new digital projector. We need two hard drive swarp, it's already installed. Once we have the hard drives, we'll be able to show first-run movies, which we are really looking forward to doing that at a lovely cost to the clientele. And that's really just about it. I'd love to see you guys come out. We're working real hard. When you're 134 years old, it takes a lot, a lot of work. We're all volunteer. None of us makes a dime off anything that happens in that building. My family, my friends are super passionate about it. We're hoping to keep it around for 134 more. I appreciate your time. Thanks for hearing me. If you guys need to ever take a look, let me know. You know how to get ahold of me, I'll be happy to show you through. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Ms. Griffith. Next, I would like to call Sue Whitman to the podium. Please do adjust the microphone and speak directly into the microphone. First, please state your full name and Middletown residence, work address, or interest in the city for the record.
My name is Sue Whitman. I am the Director of the Art Central Foundation, which is located at 4 North Main. I'm also the Treasurer of the Sorg Opera Revitalization Group, located at 63 South Main.
Thank you, and we will reset the clock? Please proceed.
I'd like to thank the members of council for allowing me to speak tonight in support of Downtown Middletown's Inc. proposal, Inc.'s proposal that the remaining funds of the 2017 Duke Energy Grant be diverted to the Sorg Opera House. DMI has been a champion of progress downtown, and we are grateful for their support of the Sorg in this request. The Sorg Opera House has been a gathering place of middle, in Middletown for over 100 years. The Sorg Opera Revitalization Group recognizes that this need still exists and strives to serve as a gathering place, not just for Middletown, but for the region. In addition to a diverse lineup of theater performances and live concerts, the theater space has become a sought-after venue for weddings, photography shoots, live drawing classes, and a meeting space for civic groups. All of this activity serves as an economic catalyst, as visitors to the Sorg explore the restaurants, bars, and shops downtown. In every study and conversation about the development of downtown, the Sorg is listed as a cornerstone and key in any revitalization success. In 2022, the Sorg launched a successful community campaign to pay off the mortgage on the Opera House. With additional help from ARPA funds granted by the city of Middletown, the building is now owned by the nonprofit, and the roof has been repaired. The balance of these ARPA funds will be used to whitebox one of the adjacent storefronts to the theater lobby. This year, the Sorg Opera House was included in the OFCC biannual budget at the state level. With monetary support from the local community, the city, and the state, the Board of the Sorg saw a need to create a development plan for the building to most wisely expend these funds. We have been working with KZF Architectural Firm to give us an overall assessment of the building, a plan for its future renovations, and estimated costs for each stage. The information presented in their assessment is a vital first step towards a complete development of the building. It will be a roadmap for any contractor or developer who will be involved in the process. In keeping with the spirit of the original Duke Energy Grant's focus on downtown development, I hope council will agree the best path forward would be to divert the remainder of these funds to the Sorg and continue to support the momentum already in progress in developing this historic gem. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Whitman. Next, I would like to call Dan Lauro to the podium. Please adjust the microphone for yourself and speak directly into the microphone. First, please state your full name and Middletown residence, work address, or interest in the city for the record.
My name is Dan Lauro. I am the owner of Gravel Road Brewing Company at 916 First Avenue down here in the historic downtown.
Thank you, and we will let the clock reset? We could, reset the clock, please? Thank you, please proceed.
As with several other people tonight, I'm here to speak to you about support for DMI and their efforts downtown. Some of the things I was gonna say have already been said, so I'm not gonna hammer you with them again and again and again. Instead, I'm gonna talk about my own personal experience with them and why I'm here. I started my own business a year and a half ago. I chose the downtown Middletown area because I saw a lot of potential in it. I, being a brewer and being in the small-business world for the past decade, I've seen what historic downtowns can be, what they can do. One only has to look at places like Pickwa, Troy, Miami'sburg, what's going on in West Carrollton, to see the importance of what these areas are for a community. People don't come to these little cities on day trips or small shopping trips because of a Chick-fil-A or a Starbucks. They come there because of a rose mercantile, or they come to drink the beer at a place like mine or New Wales. They come to shop, they come to go to places like the Sorg Theater that do interesting things and are historic, historic in value and unique. They come for events like what DMI puts on. We have over 1,000 people that come to the Women Wine and Chocolate Walk, and when they come down there, they're really surprised with the progress that we've made versus that we've made versus what they've heard about the downtown in the past. And we really need to work with them to keep pushing this forward. It is organizations like DMI that have been instrumental in the development and revitalization of these historic downtowns across the Miami Valley region. And really, that development and revitalization through their efforts is only possible if it's done in concert and cooperation with local city governments. So what I encourage you all to do is to open dialogue with them. I know I was incredibly disappointed, except with the mayor. A few months ago, DMI put together a meeting with 3CDC, which has been instrumental, and OTR. OTR is a development in the downtown, and I believe, if I recall, you were the only one who showed up, so thank you. But that is a prime opportunity that was missed for people in the city administration to open conversations about cooperation and support and what they can do, not only with DMI, but with the small business owners and the landowners down there. So what I'm asking you, as someone who's invested his entire retirement and life fortune, everything that I've worked for, to start my own business because I saw the potential down here, is to come, come, come talk to us, come work with us, support us, listen to what they have to say. They are the reason that your downtown will become unique and special and a regional draw. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Lauro. I'll now ask Laurel Gilbert to come to the podium, please. I'm not ill. I'm sorry. I'm just having a dry air room. Forgive me. Would you please adjust the microphone and speak directly into the microphone for yourself? And then please first state your full name, Middletown residence, work address, or interest in the city for the record.
Hi, my name is Laurel Gilbert. I live at 2929 Princeton Avenue in Middletown.
Forgive me. And then we will wait for the clock to reset. Please proceed. Thank you.
All right. A lot of what I've, a lot of what I've prepared has been said already, but I'm just going to read what I got because that's best. I live at 2929 Princeton in Middletown. It's a house I bought 18 months ago. Though I've only been a resident of Middletown for less than two years, I've worked at Miami University Middletown since 2002. My current day job is helping local Middletown students of all ages start, attend, and finish degrees at Miami University Regionals, and I'm committed to that work in Middletown as I admire the educational mission of Miami University. I have a son who's a junior in Oxford, and I believe in the transformative power of higher education. I first interacted with Downtown Middletown, Inc. as an attendee of the Mardi Gras Fat Tuesday Donut Walk in 2022. Then I attended the Wine Women and Chocolate Walk and Hops in the Hangar, also DMI events, in 2023. And as someone coming out of a 20-year marriage, trying to find a place for myself in my new city, all of these events helped me meet people, get connected, and experience parts of Middletown that I now call home. For new people moving into a city, having local social events, like the type of events that DMI hosts, is critical for learning the city and meeting new people. In 2024, I began volunteering with DMI. I began helping to plan the 2024 Wine Women and Chocolate Walk, which did sell out the 900 tickets, and that was amazing. I also attended that walk. I attended Hops in the Hangar this year, the Blitz and Cookie Walk. I'll be there on Saturday, the Fat Tuesday Donut Walk. And I both volunteered and I worked a craft booth at this year's Hocus Pocus event. I worked on the event DMI planned for the Eclipse in April, and I recently gotten involved with Middletown Pride. It's a smaller arm of DMI. As a parent of an LGBTQ person, it's very important to me that people who need community can find community where they are. I'm thankful for the opportunities, et cetera. I attended the presentation of the Cincinnati Center City Development Corporation, the 3CDC, who worked on the revitalization of Over the Rhine in Cincinnati, and that was hosted by DMI and held at New Ales here in town in June. And the last six months, I've grown more and more excited about that model of development being applied to the downtown Middletown area. I also really look forward to, I hope I'm right on this, an open stage area over the new water treatment thing that's going in on Central. I'm a big music person. I'm very excited to see that happen. I think DMI is an organization that already has a lot of traction in the city and community. The Wine Women and Chocolate Walk sells out the last two times I've attended. Hops in the Hangar is a great draw for beer enthusiasts. I want to shout out Gravel Road and New Ales is phenomenal breweries in town. I also want to mention a podcast by Wes of New Ales that talks about the importance of breweries in building community in a city. And then I also worked at the Eclipse event and Hocus Pocus, and I watched so many families come and do things together and meet people with other children in that situation. And even though my own children are grown, I recognize how good it is for a community to have these yearly and planned events for families and people to attend and enjoy. So basically, I asked for continued and increased support for DMI because the infrastructure is there, the volunteers are there, and there's a rhythm to the DMI calendar that's getting built on as we go through the years. And this can't be overstated. This isn't a new group of people or a new nonprofit who needs to get their feet under them. This is an established nonprofit with a yearly schedule that brings people to the downtown area, brings people together in the community. DMI events bring people from outside Middletown, and we're building on that with the Beer Bourbon and Bros Walk, Hocus Pocus and Pride, bringing people together for the community aspect of being with people who share their values, that care about them. Let's see, I can wrap this up. I'm excited for that outdoor music venue.
Ms. Gilbert, that is time. Thank you.
Is it time?
Yes, thank you.
Thank you very much for what you do, and I definitely am in support of DMI.
Thank you. Next, I'd like to call Kirk Allen to the podium. Please do adjust the microphone for yourself and speak directly into the microphone. First, please state your full name and Middletown residence, work address, or interest in the city for the record.
Kirk Allen. My address, my business address is 140 North Verity Parkway.
Excellent. Thank you. And we will set the clock. Please proceed.
Sorry, I'm not sick either. Just maybe some dry air. Hello, Mayor Slank and council. Today, I would like to further encourage you to approve funding for DMI's 2025 operations. Over the last four years, I've worked with DMI, and I can tell you without them, there would be no one from the city that had any involvement in my business. And by that, I mean the future of my business, or maybe the sustainability of it. DMI is really the only person that maybe I feel like cares that we're even in business. What I would like to see is maybe a liaison between the city and local DMI, or I'm sorry, local businesses like DMI is acting as. Some small things from the city could make a huge impact to our local businesses. I think with the city's support, you may find better businesses that would come into this town with more occupancy rate, and maybe fewer buildings that are either boarded up or the windows papered up. Again, DMI has really held me out over the past few years, and I hope that they can continue to. Thank you very much for your time.
Thank you, Mr. Allen. Next, I would like to call Steve Wayne to the podium. Please adjust the microphone for yourself and speak directly into the microphone. First, please state your full name and Middletown residence, work address, or interest in the city.
My name is Steve Wayne. I work at Miami Middletown.
Thank you, and you'll have four minutes of uninterrupted speech. Please commence.
Hello, my name is Steve Wayne, and I wanted to give a testimonial for DMI Downtown Middletown, Inc. I work at Miami University in Middletown, and I'm retired from Procter and Gamble. When I came to Middletown five years ago, I wanted to learn more about the city. I signed up to be a volunteer at Sorg Opera House, and I was fortunate enough to be asked to join DMI's board, where I am now the treasurer and soon-to-be vice chair. DMI's mission is to build. B, build a vibrant community. U, unify downtown's businesses and organizations. I, improve downtown's image and appearance. L, leverage historical preservation. And D, develop a strong economic base. DMI is a 501(c)(3) nonprofit that relies on volunteers and donations to run programs, events, and initiatives like Very Merry Middletown, Dora, First Fridays, Women's Wine and Chocolate Walk, Dog Days, Hocus Pocus, and Thunderfest. DMI also serves as the fiscal agent for Pride and Hops in the Hangar. And last year, DMI's board, staff, and army of volunteers gave over 4,000 hours of service and brought over 50,000 people downtown for events. I personally give my time, talents, and treasures to DMI, and I humbly ask for your support so DMI can continue its great work and bring even more people into downtown for so many great upcoming events and programs in 2025. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Wayne. Next, I would like to call Linda Mormon to the podium, please. Please do adjust the microphone and speak directly into the microphone. And first, please state your full name, Middletown residence, work address, or interest in the city for the record.
My name is Linda Mormon. I live at 203 Stanley Street. All right, we own the 1054 Central Avenue, Beauvais Building, downtown Middletown. Did I forget?
Nothing. Next, I'm just going to ask for the clock to be reset, and then you can proceed. Thank you.
I'm here to say that we are building a loft in downtown Middletown. Nobody knows. There's one going above our building. It's 25,000 square feet. And the way we got to this is through DMI. Jeff found out about the Brune Grant and presented it to us, and we filled out papers, and we got it. It's taken a couple of years to get to this point because of COVID and a lot of other things that happened, but here we grow again. We just keep busting out, doing stuff, and I don't know how much longer we're going to last, but my husband started, was one of the founding members of DMI. We started in the dark meetings downtown, and before anything ever happened. We've been hanging in there, and we would love to see downtown get busier, but I know DMI tries putting on lots of events, as do a lot of us business owners downtown. So we need help. We need help bringing people down. They're just not showing up. And I don't think it's anything we're doing wrong. I don't know what it is, but it's a great downtown. We got a great city. We got the new vice president part of our city. I did ask him to be part of the Santa Parade, by the way. So we did ask for things, but I know he probably didn't get the message. But it is a great city to live in. I've been downtown in my whole life. I went to St. John's Catholic School, and then I went to the freshman school, and then I went, I worked downtown for 19 years, right by the railroad tracks, and then my husband and I moved down here. So I've been down here a long time. I've seen this town go through a lot of changes. We just need a better change for, to keep businesses flowing downtown. We just need people. And I don't know what the answer is, but DMI is trying to help bring the people here, and so are we. We have tour buses that come monthly. I don't know. I don't know what the answer is, but they need your help. We need your help. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Mormon. Next, I would like to call, oh, this is a duplicate, looks like. Yeah. And next, I would like to call Jay Mormon to the podium, please. Please adjust the microphone and speak directly into the microphone. First, please state your full name and Middletown residence, work address, or interest in the city for the record.
My name's Jay Mormon. I live at 203 Stanley Street, Middletown, Ohio, and I own 1054 Central, which is Beauvais Studios, also formerly Murphy's Landing and the Canal Pub.
Thank you, and we will reset the clock, and you'll have four minutes of uninterrupted speech. Please commence.
My wife just spoke and pretty much said everything I got to say, but when I understood that they were doing an appreciation of DMI, I felt I had to say something. I was a founding member. We were also the first bar saloon to get a Dora license in Ohio, not just Middletown. I, I'm not from here, but I've been here 40 years, and we were the first business when they took the roof off the mall at the old Murphy Building. And there again, I just want to thank DMI and try to tell you how important and necessary it is. And like Linda said, they facilitated a grant for our third floor that we're doing a 2,400-square-foot loft that we wouldn't have considered until sitting down with Heritage Ohio. And I want to thank each and every one of you for your dedication, your time, and Paul especially has worked with me for 20 years and couldn't have done more to try to help downtown. Like Linda said, I don't know what the answer is. Hamilton, Miami'sburg seem to all be growing, and we've got one of the safest downtowns in the country. There are, were some homeless, but they weren't threatening. We could leave at any time at night. I mean, it's nothing like Over the Rhine or anything like that. So there's so much promise here. I hope we can figure out an answer. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Mormon. Next, I would like to call Sharice Capadona to the podium. Please adjust the microphone and speak directly into the microphone. Please state your full name and Middletown residence, work address, or interest in the city for the record.
Sure. My name is Sharice Capadona. I live at 1801 Dix Road.
And we will reset the clock. You'll have four minutes of uninterrupted speech. Please commence.
Okay, so you heard my name. I'm Sharice Capadona. I am a Middletown resident. I've lived here for 15 years. I'm originally from Cleveland, Ohio, and I was actually kind of surprised to find myself here in Middletown. So I agree with everything that everyone has said here. I'm not going to reiterate the importance of community and having things to do and the importance of DMI. What I am going to say is, as a person who did not grow up here and did not have any ties to this city, at least I didn't think that I did, Middletown is where I learned more about myself. I learned more about myself as a person who lived in a community that I didn't have growing up. I learned more about myself as a parent, having three children who are at very, very different developmental stages in their lives. And just in general, as a human, I learned more about myself here in Middletown. Middletown was here for my family when we needed support the most through a very devastating event. Middletown was here to celebrate just all of the wonderful things that have happened in everybody's everyday life, whether it's the Hocus Pocus Festival at Halloween, or the celebrations that we have during the winter holidays. I will say that DMI has been very integral in every step of the way through that process of me becoming a full resident of this city. I met Jeff ages ago, just attending events, and, you know, he was always personable, always talking to me and making me and my family feel welcome. And that is something that you don't find in a lot of other cities. I can, I've gone to events in Hamilton. I've gone to events in Miami'sburg, but there is something unique about being able to see a familiar face, and then they, they recognize you and they call you by name. And that was so impressive to me that I became a member, a board member of Downtown Middletown, Inc. very recently. So I'm the newest board member. I just want to say, any support that is given to downtown not only supports Downtown Middletown, Inc., but it supports businesses. It supports families. It supports and fosters that sense of community that everybody talked about, but it also helps us learn and grow. And I am learning and growing as a result of DMI because I've stepped out of my comfort zone, and I'm now giving back as a volunteer, as a board member, to really invest in the city for my sake, for my children's sake, for the future of this city. And as a person who lived in Cleveland for 32 years, I loved my birthplace, but this is home. Middletown always felt like home. And just really quickly, I learned that this is where my great-grandparents got married and started their family. So if it wasn't for Middletown, there would be no me. So I'm going to close on that. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Ms. Capadona. Next, I'd like to call Joe Mulligan to the podium. There you are. There you are. Please adjust the mic, speak directly into it. State your full name, Middletown residence, work address, or interest in the city for the record, please.
Good evening. Joe Mulligan, 525 Thornhill Lane.
And could we reset the clock? Please commence.
Good evening, Mayor, City Council, staff, city manager. I'm here as a DMI board member, volunteer, donor, and past city council liaison to the DMI Board. I just, without repeating anything that's been stated previously, I want to provide some historical context of how DMI started. The city's 2005 master plan actually called out some objectives and some issues that needed to be addressed. Create a sustainable downtown. Downtown has the potential to be a source of great civic pride and an amenity to local and regional residents, but is currently underutilized. And this is from 20 years ago. As capacity outgrows the capabilities of volunteers alone, consider creating a downtown management program with a paid director who is experienced in the field of downtown enhancement and management. The director would be responsible for business recruitment and retention, marketing and promotion, clean and safe operations, and management of volunteer committees. The next point was revisit the concept of creating a special improvement district, a CID, as a means of financing the downtown management program. And for your reference, there are a lot of acronyms. A CID is a property tax levied upon property owners willingly. And those funds are collected annually to provide for designated amenities such as beautification, maintenance, public safety, marketing, and other physical or capital improvements. So, although DMI as a creation of a downtown management program was birthed with a paid director, the second part of that, the special improvement district, was never implemented. And so, here we are on this annual dance that DMI does with city staff and sometimes council, asking for financial support and in-kind support. But there is plenty of support for DMI in the 2022 Comprehensive Master Plan because that incorporated not only the 2017 Downtown Strategic Plan, but also incorporated the Parks Plan and the Airport Plan. So, there is, there is a basis for this in the governing documents of our city. And as you look to a 92-page Downtown Strategic Plan from 2017, DMI appears as a quote-unquote "responsible party" for dozens of initiatives alongside the city manager, city council, economic development department, parks, public works, planning and zoning, the Visitors Bureau, and even Butler Metro Park. So, DMI stands with these key stakeholders to implement our strategic plan. A key reason that DMI is requesting additional city investment is so that we can reach financial stability and plan out months and quarters and years in advance and truly engage in the strategy of building and maintaining a vibrant downtown core. We can't reach our potential if the focus is solely on fundraising and managing cash flow. So, even with continued additional support, DMI will operate in an efficient manner and will rely on our legion of volunteers, private donors, foundation donors, and patrons at ticketed events. I would encourage city council and members of staff to take a look at DMI for thoughtful and strategic ways to implement the adopted comprehensive plan for the city. DMI stands ready to assist with expertise. We have a diverse board from public and private backgrounds. And DMI wants to be held accountable for results.
Thank you, Mr. Mulligan. That's four minutes.
All right.
Finishing statement.
Thank you very much. Happy holidays.
Well, thank you very much. And the final person coming tonight is Eric Sotzing. Please call Eric to the, Mr. Sotzing. Okay, no problem. Thank you. Absolutely. Okay. Thank you to everyone who spoke. That concludes our public participation this evening. We will now go back to the regular agenda. So, the next item on the agenda is the public hearing for the preliminary development plan and plan development map amendment and zone change at the Lincoln Local, I'm sorry, Lincoln School site on Central Avenue. And Assistant Law Director Brody Conover, you have the floor for the swearing in.
Sure. So, anyone that's going to be speaking in the public hearing tonight, I'm going to have you stand up and raise your right hand. So, this is if your staff, if you're the applicant, any residents that might live nearby and think that they're thinking about speaking or not, even if you're thinking about it, I'd rather you just do it now and stand up. So, like Claire, everyone can raise their right hand. And then I will just say, do you all swear that the testimony that you will give tonight will be the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth? Yes. Okay. So, when you, when you check in or when you speak tonight, just please make sure you say your name, your address, and then verify that you've been sworn in. So, that way we have for the record that you have been. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Conover. The staff report next will be given by City Planner Claire Fetters.
All right. I'm going to read from the slides because as the previous public comment said, it's best way to not mess up. So, this is a request by applicant Revolve Properties LLC for approval of a preliminary development plan for the towns of Lincoln Village known as the parcels listed to construct 59 townhome units with a public street, water, sanitary, and storm sewers, as well as two pocket parks. The properties are a total of approximately 5.7 acres and the project will need approval by city council for the plan development, map amendment, and zone change. So, for property background, the subject property is owned currently R4 Attached Residential. Per the Middletown Development Code, the purpose of the R4 Attached Residential District is to provide for moderate to high-density residential development, generally located in the core area of the city, and that reflects the historic urban development pattern in and around downtown Middletown. Also, the property was the former home to the former Lincoln Elementary School, which was built in 1927. The school was in operation until 1980 when students were moved to the Roosevelt Elementary School. Following the closure of the school, several small businesses have operated out of the building until their formal closure and demolition in 2021. The demolish, following the demolition, the property has remained a vacant lot. Per the Middletown Comprehensive Plan, the property is located in Central Avenue Corridor, special interest area. The vision for the Central Avenue Corridor is a flourishing neighborhood scale, commercial corridor district that is walkable and is a destination location for the city. The corridor is envisioned to continue movement from the downtown that serves and receives support from the surrounding neighborhoods. The corridor has two large-scale redevelopment opportunities through reimagining the old Roosevelt School site and the former Lincoln School into a premier mixed residential development. As for staff analysis, the applicant proposes the planned development unit, which will be comprised of 59 units with a variation of three-unit and four-unit front-loaded townhomes that will be served by a north-to-south public street connecting Central Avenue to Howard Avenue. Based on the conceptual drawing submitted, the townhomes are proposed to have a 20-foot front yard setback, a 30-foot rear yard setback, a six-foot side yard setback between the property lines, and a six-foot side yard setback, which will be at 12 feet total between the different building units. The proposed dwell, the, excuse me, the proposed development will result in 10.32 dwelling unit per acre density. Per the Middletown Development Code, Chapter 120407 Zoning District Regulations, the purpose of the planned development district is to provide an opportunity for creative and flexible land development, where a base zoning district will not accommodate the proposed development, but where such development will further the purpose of this code and the goals and policies of the master plan. The planned development district is designed to allow for deviations from certain zoning standards that will otherwise apply, if not contrary to the general spirit and intent of this code. Here's the provided conceptual plan. The text is a little blurry, but we can still speak to it. As for site development standards, per Chapter 120410 Site Development Standards, there shall not be more than one principal building on an individual lot, except as approved as part of a planned development or as part of an approved condominium project. In such cases, the entire group as a unit shall be subject to the minimum setbacks for that applicable zoning district and lot type. Each individual building shall meet all yard requirements for the appropriate district as though it were on an individual lot. For architectural standards, for the recent text update, those buildings in an approved development plan shall be exempt from architectural standards. For off-street parking, per Chapter 121804, three-family dwellings require two spaces per unit and 1.5 spaces are required for multifamily dwellings, which is over that three-family dwelling. For late site landscaping, Chapter 121602 applicability, all development in a planned development shall be subject to the standards of this chapter unless otherwise modified through the planned development review and approval process. And when a development is subject to the provisions of the section, a landscaping plan shall be submitted with a certificate of zoning compliance application. Specifically for trees, a minimum of three trees shall be provided in each front yard area, up to two, which may be planted between the sidewalk and the street curb. Each street, each tree shall be a minimum of one and one-half inch caliper diameter pressed height. This is a waiver that the applicant is requesting on the trees, and they will be proposing to have landscaping as depicted in that conceptual plan. For subdivision, per Chapter 122203 General Design Standards, Part B, street lighting, street lighting shall be provided in accordance with the Manual of Design for Public Improvements. And also for Part E, preservation of natural features, natural features shall be preserved to the maximum extent feasible in accordance with the City of Middletown's Manual of Design for Public Improvements. And then also streets, any street which is located partially or totally within a development project may be dedicated as a public street, provided it is constructed in accordance with the Manual of Design for Public Improvements, and further provided that a record subdivision plat shall be submitted and approved by the Planning Commission and dedication of the street accepted by city council. For the public notice, per the Middletown Development Code, Chapter Table 122601 Notice Requirements, public notice was published in the paper at least 30 days prior to this meeting, and letters were sent out to all property owners within 200 feet of the property. There's a slight error on that slide. I did receive a phone call today, this afternoon, just expressing concern about the density of the development specifically related to traffic impacts. Other than that, all letters and emails have been forwarded to you and your staff packets. And then you can see all the other department comments from city management, public works and utility department, and our engineering division, the community and economic development department. These were all provided for the initial public hearing back in October. The applicant did provide responses to all these comments for the November meeting of Planning as well as a traffic trip generation study. A little blurry on the slides, but again, it's in your staff packet. Here is option one, proposed front elevation. Option two, proposed front elevation. The application of the preliminary development plan in letter of intent. Here's your review criteria for the preliminary development plan. As for staff recommendation, the Planning Commission's recommendation is of approval with contingencies as being forwarded to you for final review and decision. After reviewing the application and supporting materials submitted and hearing testimonies from the applicant and the public, the Planning Commission voted five to two to make a recommendation of approval. The Planning Commission approved the preliminary development plan and map amendment/zone change dependent on the completion of a traffic impact study, approval of the development from the City of Middletown Fire Chief to ensure access for emergency vehicles is adequate, and reduction of number of units to 57 front-loaded townhomes with the removal of units 27 and 28 as numbered on the conceptual plan. And following Planning Commission in November, the applicant and Fire Chief, Middletown's Fire Chief and myself sat in a meeting where the applicant and the Fire Chief discussed access points. I know that the Fire Chief provided the applicant with dimensions on the ladder truck. Am I saying that right? So that the applicant could run a hammerhead turn onto Howard. But that is where that stands currently as for Fire Chief's approval. And that will conclude my staff report.
Thank you, Ms. Fetters. So, at this, at this point, we'll ask for, in support.
Yep, applicant is here.
Okay. So, at this point, we'll ask the applicant to please come to the podium. Excuse me. And just please state your name and confirm you've been sworn in.
Good evening. My name is Adam Cristo. I'm at 7594 Tyler's Place Boulevard, Westchester, Ohio, and I have been sworn in.
Thank you. Please proceed.
Just to give a brief history on the Lincoln School project, we were notified of the, from the city about a new RFP that had become available. I guess the previous one was unsuccessful and the city was encouraging us to take a look at it. And there was a housing study, massive need for new attainable product in the downtown area of Middletown to attract new residents and be obviously an economic growth driver. We worked with the city and made a preliminary proposal that we were awarded the RFP upon successful negotiation with city council on a final layout schematic that we worked with Nathan, their city council, on multiple revisions, back and forth, to finally come up with this plan that was agreed on between us, city council, and the city. And we executed an agreement based on this layout, obviously subject to Planning Commission and city council's final approval. It's been about a year in the works. We've invested quite a bit of time and energy enhancing elevations. We, in the previous, I think, RFP, we put a much nicer product, enhanced elevations, enhanced amenities, and we made it an HOA, totally managed exterior, to be professionally managed, mow the grass, fertilize, take care of all the, you know, exterior needs so it stays always in a like-new appearance. We then obviously worked through Planning Commission and addressed multiple points of concern that they have. We were successfully addressed those and obviously were passed with two additional, two conditions. One was to make sure the turnaround radius was wide enough for a ladder truck. Our engineer ran the current dimensions and it, about a 20-foot-wide radius proved more than ample amount of turn radius for the fire truck. We also agreed or willing to improve that hammerhead turnaround with new pavement. So, there's no concern or issue on the way to the fire truck. And 20 feet is more than ample. There is multiple, you know, you go around the city, look at 20-foot radiuses. We actually have more room than than that. We can go to 25. I mean, it's like, how big do you want it to be? You know, I mean, I think there's some concerns without taking two units off. We can shave more radius. We can make it bigger. I don't think it's needed, but if there is some unknown concern that I don't understand, we still could go up even, you know, to 25-foot radius would be, you know, 25% bigger than you'd need. So, we are asking for that condition to be removed because we definitely can prove that we can provide appropriate turning radius. Lastly, there was the condition of traffic study and the And the traffic study is only required for the design manuals when there's more than fifty peak. Traffic units per day. We're well under this. And the reason that metric is there is obviously through history, when you don't have more than fifty peak traffic units. A traffic study is shown, you know, unneeded or, you know, let's say wasteful because there's not enough to drive the concern. This was a former, obviously, large school with hundreds of more traffic units than we're even proposing with no. New housing stock that has been built there since basically that time. It was also, uh, multiple office buildings with client parking. And I don't believe there is any issues, um, at that time either. So, and that's the, the brief history, bringing you up to date. I would be happy to answer any further questions at this time or anytime you'd like to call me back up.
Yes, I think, um, maybe we'll continue and call up at, when we have our discussion perhaps, or do you want to ask some questions now? Sure, we can. Yeah, I think so. Yeah, that's great.
Well, my question is to the fire chief. Is this good where the ladder truck and the pumper truck can, can come in? Are you comfortable? Because that was, that was my only condition. Is that the fire department, because that the first responder could be coming from that part of town and need to come up through Howard. So I just want the fire chief to say he's met with you. And that that study or this model is accurate. Is that correct?
Fire Chief Snively? Please take the mic, please. I'm sorry. Thank you.
So a couple of points I want to make. Um, first of all, this would not be a primary access for us. We would not, we would not enter off Howard. That's nothing more than a gravel road there. Um, so we would enter off central.
Right.
So ideally, the hammerhead, um, as you can see, this is a conceptual drawing. In theory, that works, but it's tight.
I get it. One reason I'm asking is, yes, it's a secondary, but you have to have all options. What if there is something else going on on central and you have to enter through this way? I, all, all I want to know is that. Even this as a secondary, this would not be your primary entrance, but can you enter?
We cannot enter off Howard as it stands now. If that entire road was paved to Edgewood, um, it would be different. As I said, there's a hammerhead that it shows on the conceptual drawing. It doesn't show paving all the way to Edgewood.
And, um, forgive me, please speak into the mic so we can make sure we can record this.
Is it, is it tight or you can't get in? I heard you say it was tight. Now I'm hearing you can't get in.
This was generated by a computer.
Okay.
Based on our ladder trucks, our tower ladder specifics, it would fit in there. However, if you look at that picture. There are garages, there, there's other pavement that, you know, that is there. Um, I've actually walked.
Okay.
I mean, I, I was born on Superior. I went to school there. So I know the area well. Coming in that direction would be a last resort. If it was paved, we could do it. Yeah.
Okay. All right.
One point to, to speak to that, I mean visually what you see and the improvements after we make it, I mean, they're going to be designed. I think when you look at it, there's some overgrown trees that make it look tighter. There's twenty-five feet of rideaway there. There is. I mean, if the, obviously the city kept that portion of the street up and was paving it and maintaining it, there wouldn't be that tightness. But most of that is from, you know, there's nothing in the right of way other than those tree, those, those garages are not in the right of way, but the, there's overgrowth in trees that make it shrink down.
There's concrete board.
Yeah, it needs to be, you know, if there's, I mean, people are traversing it, but, but once those trees are cleared, it'll open up. Obviously, once we create the pavement. And widen that, I mean, you have twenty-five feet. I mean, that's ample.
Well, you and I had a, had a conversation and you were like, well, you know, other parts of the city, they have, don't have this. But when we're doing new, anything that we can make better and make it safer, because if we, if we don't make it safe. Then we're just, we're just trying to build stuff just to build things and just to get things developed. Um, we have a requirement to, even if this is a secondary and the chief says every time we're, we're coming in here for, be it paramedics, be it the police department, be it the fire. We're coming in through central. What if that one situation where there's a wreck on Schaefer and it's blocked? And you have a fire on unit twenty-eight and they have to get there and that's the only way to get there. If this is a secondary, I just want it to be where. All parties involved, all first responders are okay getting their vehicles as a secondary entrance. Obviously, we don't want to gravel or anything like that. And yes, it does belong to the city. It says Howard Avenue. So there's going to have to be some working with that. But that was one of the contentions of, we want this, anything new, we make it more safer for our citizens, for our current citizens and for future citizens. And I've just. I just want the fire chief to say, okay, this is not my primary entrance, Paul. If I'm going to come in with the pumper truck or the ladder truck, these are condos. I don't know if you can really bring the ladder truck in, but you might. Uh, but the pumper truck, you might really bring that in because that's what you're going to respond with anyways. And then, uh, an ambulance and a police car will fit in no problem.
Howard would be coming there.
So, so that's, that's just my concern and that was my concern throughout the whole preliminary conversation. Um, and I understand also, you know, removal of twenty-seven and twenty-eight, that's six hundred thousand dollars. So I get that, but the thing is, is. Our citizen's safety, current and future, has to be shown when we are talking about any type of development. No matter what we've done in the past, if we have the opportunity to make, give a primary and a secondary entrance for first responders. Then we need to at least do our due diligence.
Fire Chief, um, would you speak to, you said that if it is paved, it would work and do, would you need the twenty-five feet? And paved at the same time?
Well, as you can see, the, the main road that comes in there is twenty-four feet.
Okay.
So, I mean, twenty-four feet would work.
And paved, correct?
And paved.
And paved, okay. I think that's what the concession would be then.
And I, you know, and it's something to keep in mind here, that those ladder trucks are a million and a half dollars. So we need to have plenty of room to maneuver and not have to worry about, you know, damage or, or people hitting them. Um, I mean, since COVID, they've went up nearly forty percent. So it's something, it's not everything. Safety's the most important part. But being able to access that in a way that makes sense and get turned around is, is also important to me.
Understood. That's why, that's why I brought it up. It's, it's very important to all of us.
I, I have a quick question for staff. Is Howard Avenue scheduled to be paved ever?
I, I heard it was going to be paved soon by the city very soon. No, I'm just kidding.
Well, I, I mean. It needs. Well, I'm, I'm just looking at it from reality. If I'm going to live towards, you know. The, the units towards the end, towards Howard, it'd be nice if I could pay two hundred and seventy thousand or whatever these condos are going to go for. And actually maybe go out that way instead of central.
Yeah, I don't know if it's on the schedule for next year, but it, it needs to be. I mean, it.
Yeah, it, I, yeah, I mean, if this were approved.
Yeah.
You would essentially have a gravel driveway if you're in some of those.
Exactly.
So, uh, that's, that's insane.
I mean, yeah, I mean, I went out there the other day and I was, I was surprised as to the level of.
Yeah.
Deterioration.
Okay, so, I mean, that's outside of Mr., uh, not a question for you, obviously, Mr. Cristo or, or criticism, but yeah, that's my.
Yeah.
If, if these get approved and they're built, I feel bad for the realtor that's showing the units, especially twenty-seven and twenty-eight. People are going to go, wait, what? So I, I'd like to see Howard Avenue kind of bumped up a little bit.
And I mean, we're, we're agreeing to take, you know, a big significant portion of that.
Sure.
Just to make sure the turnaround's there. So we're, we're contributing, you know, quite a bit. I mean, if you look at the, that size, it's probably, you know, more than. Right, thirty-five percent of the paving, um, that we're going to do to make sure that, that, you know, there's a safe turnaround. On the secondary access, you know, there's multiple, I mean, new communities that are being built without a secondary access. I mean. It's been, I mean, even the street, I grew up in the new streets, you know, over by the, you know, down university. It's never been, uh, an issue. I guess we always can say on any street anywhere that. Something could be blocked at, you know, any time, but what has been the standard, what has history shown in the city of Middletown on one-entered streets? I mean, you could say, well, we need three because, I mean, I, I mean, there's got to be, I always like to look at things logically. I mean, if there's a legitimate concern and we've seen that. There's been cases where that's caused issue in Middletown by having on these one streets, you know, that precludes it, but it still has that access. The city, I mean, uh, obviously, um, you know, paving that, I think it would be, um, a service to the community. And obviously with our contrib- contribution, um, would work for us, so.
Thank you. Yes, it does sound like it is a priority for council. Okay. Any other questions right now from Mr. Cristo?
And to your point, it would only be fair that since this is a street with a name on it, that there would be coordination between the city and yourself. We're not asking you to pave four hundred feet and, and on your dime. But it is, since it's there, why not take advantage of it versus if this was just a, not even an alley, it was just a former. You know, you, it's going to have to turn into a cul-de-sac and that's, that's, that's it. It's just a single entrance, you know, no outlet at the front of the entrance and that's it. It's just, we have an opportunity here and that's all.
I, I agree.
And, you know, we're, we definitely want to work with anyone who wants to, uh, help us, uh, grow our city with, with a proper density. So that's all I got.
Thank you. And, um, anybody else for, Mr. Cristo?
I do have, um, one or two questions on the retention basin. So with that being, you know, close to the Central Avenue, obviously that's going to be a high visibility area. I- is that going to be a treated basin as far as, you know, aeration or anything like that, or is it going to be a still sort of like dyed bluish-green?
So it'll be a dry basin. I.
Okay.
I don't know why they, you guys show it blue. It is confusing. It's, you know, some, some there's detain and retain. So, um, this is only temporary. It, it only, uh, will have any. You know, a few feet of water that engineers could speak in, just only twenty-four to, you know, thirty-two hours after a significant.
Severe get rain.
So it'll be mowed, it'll be grass, you know.
Okay, okay.
Eight percent of the time.
That, uh, yeah, I saw it was blue on this and I was like, I don't really remember it being standing water. So, okay, that makes sense.
Any other questions at this time?
I have one.
Mrs. Carter?
Affordable housing. What's the price of these, these units?
Well, we're in the preliminary stages. Um, I mean, it is very difficult to, you know, attainable. Housing is our, our goal. It's what's needed and to be competitive with the surrounding housing stock. It, it's going to be a difficult chore being. New housing, but we're gonna, you know, depending on what we're imposed on as far as requirements, you know, we're hoping to be, you know, three hundred. Um, we'd love to be less than that, but we, you know, everything we're seeing, the, the route, you know, with new development costs, we'll, you know, we'll be three hundred plus.
Is three hundred plus affordable?
Nowadays, believe it or not, that's the, the starting, I mean, to find a starter home, um, this size, that is. Probably in this entire area, the, the, for three-bedroom, two-and-a-half bath, that is considered a starter affordable home.
Any other questions for Mr. Cristo at this time? No, thank you. You may, you may sit. And I just wanted to clarify one thing with Ms., uh, Chief Snively. Um, and you can just nod. Um, so if we have the pavement done, then twenty, units twenty-seven and twenty-eight can remain. Is that correct? They don't have to be removed in order for the fire truck to get through? So he's saying, yes. The drive. Okay, all right. So I just want to make that clear.
No need for removal.
Thank you. All right. So the next, um, portion of the public hearing, we will ask for those in support to raise their hands. And, um, then we'll just ensure that you can come to the podium. So those in support of the plan, does anyone wish to speak? Okay, seeing none, we will move on to those opposed to the development. Please raise your hand if you are opposed and wish to speak. Okay, we will start, um, over here and sir, please come down to the podium. Please do adjust the microphone and speak directly into it so that we can have it recorded. Please state your full name, your, and your address, and then please confirm that you've been sworn in.
Certainly. My name is Eric Saatsing. I live at six Alameda Circle, Middletown, Ohio, and yes, I have been sworn in.
Thank you. Please proceed.
So, um, I do want to speak, um, in partial opposition to the development plan, to be honest. I am not completely against development of this site by any stretch of the imagination. I do believe that there does need to be something in that space, um, where the former Lincoln property used to be. My concern is that I've attended each of the public meetings that have happened before this. And the plan that has been presented, I think certainly still has problems. And I would like for the council to look at that and make some adjustments to what's currently happening. In order to make it fit better with the neighborhood and also to be able to present what is being claimed as part of the, um. Opening or gateway to the community. I don't think that the current plan that's addressed here does that. And I have some very specific concerns that I addressed during those public meetings as well as, um, tonight. I do know that there is a, um, preliminary RFP that went out, that's been looked at and done through that process. The only public hearing that I'm aware of that occurred during that was during this initial design phase when I received a notice. Because my property is directly adjacent to this property. So unless there were other parts for input from the community, I don't know that that's happened. And I know that there are multiples that's, that's occurred during that public meeting. My concern in this particular spot is, number one, how does it fit with the surrounding community? It is directly adjacent to the Highlands Historic District that is, in my opinion, a gem to this community. It's one of only two. When you look at all of the density that occurs around that, to be directly adjacent to that, I think creates issues. I think it creates issues from a variety of things, from traffic coming in and out. I know the traffic study's been dismissed. I do want to look at that as far as ingress and egress. I think there's some concerns that we look at that with, there's five entrances on central and a light. That how is all that going to, to work through that as you go within a block and a quarter? So I think that certainly needs to be addressed. As far as the density issues, if you look at the Highlands Historic District, all across the entire east, excuse me. West side, east-west, I'm not sure which way it is. So the side, the historic district goes to the Alameda Circle. On that side, there's only eight homes all the way across there. We're proposing fifty-nine units in that particular space. Even if you jump across over to the side where you're dealing with Linden Avenue and Arlington, if you count all those houses all the way down to Sutven. There's only thirty-two homes in that section, which is highly dense. So we're putting fifty-nine homes in between that. That are not individual homes, but are, that are condos, that are attached. Now I do want to, I do appreciate the fact that zoning. Looked at this to be able to have it as owner occupied, not rental property. Absolutely appreciate that. I think that is certainly a consideration that needs to happen in that space. My concern when I look at it though, is that all of those units are attached and the density that occurs going through that property. My other concern that I come out of that is, in the future, can that change? Is that part of the deed that they will be owner occupied or can these be rentals potentially? Uh, could it be low-income housing that could eventually go in there? So those would be things that I would look to be concerned about within that neighborhood. The other concern that I have, um, is the front doorstep to this is the retention basement. I don't believe that this plan specifically addresses how that aesthetically looks in the area. We have a retention basin to the front. There's no call out for additional landscaping. I do believe that that can create a safety hazard as close to what it is to the street that is up in front. I also believe that there's an existing home that is on the edge of that right next to the retention basin. I don't believe that that has been considered and has the council considered potentially pulling that in and making it more cohesive. As opposed to having the eight homes that are along this side, fifty-nine homes in the front with a basin to the front and then boom, one home right on the corner. It doesn't make sense. It does not aesthetically help that area, in my opinion. The other thing that I would like to be concerned about is that the existing building that was on that property, there was an annex that was closer to the historic district side. There is an existing retaining wall there now with drainage right behind it. What's happening to that? What's happening to that? Whose responsibility is that? Is that addressed in the landscaping plan? I've not seen it. I asked that question at the previous meeting and that has not been addressed. Part of that then goes to the fact, because those two structures are there, there is limited ability to provide some buffering between both of the properties, front and back. In order to do that, I don't see that called out in the landscaping plan. In the landscaping plan, it addressed that there are three trees to be placed on each property. To the front of the property, what's going to the back? I think there needs to be something involved in that and I definitely believe we need to look for buffering in those areas. I have additional concern when we were talking about adding more places in here of removing additional trees that go through to do that. So I think buffering has to be a consideration. The other part that I would put in there is all along the property, backside to the bottom of the drawing and to the historic district side, there's an existing dilapidated fence from the previous owners that were there. It definitely provides a barrier, but who is going to take care of that? What's going to happen to the landscaping when that's taken out? There is honeysuckle and all types of things growing through it. So that's going to have to be part of the plan that I've not seen anything involved in this particular. And I realize this is preliminary, but it seems like it's moving very quickly with only a few considerations on some of these items and I think that we need to take a pause and go through that. The other part that I would look at is back on the front portion of this in the ingress and egress. There are five entrances or five streets right across here with the one entrance. There's a light at Schaefer Street. How is that going to work? People coming out of that, if that light is green or is red, how do they turn to the other direction? So I think it creates some traffic congestion that I said, we're not looking at a traffic study, but if you look across that, you've got the one street along this side, you have Schaefer Street up there, you have the entrance to this property. As you come down here, you've got a driveway that's coming out of a home right next to the entrance and then you come down to the next street and then Alameda Circle. A block and a quarter, you've got all that stuff coming in and out and I definitely think that needs to be addressed. So my question is, or my hope is from council, is definitely, let's look at develop, develop the area, but let's look at what's around it and complement what's there. I don't think that the density that we have here and the way that it's laid out does that and I think we need to take pause and make sure that we look at what's around it and take that into consideration as well. I've lived here 19 years in that property, invested thousands all the way through and I know many of my neighbors have as well. So we want to make sure that we continue to protect that and keep that as part of the community as well. We like Middletown. We love Middletown. You know, we've been here a long time, continue, plan to stay here. But I think this piece gives a little bit of pause for concern as far as the density that's in there. So please take that into consideration as you move forward. Thank you.
Thank you. And who is next over here, please? Yes, sir, would you please, right behind you, come to the, oh, yes. Please do adjust the microphone for yourself and speak directly into it. And if you would, please state your full name, your address, and then confirm that you've been sworn in, please.
My name is John Hader and I live at 16 Alameda Circle. What was the other thing you needed?
Were you sworn in? Just confirm?
Oh, yes. Yes, I was sworn in.
Thank you. Please proceed.
Okay, I'd like to start out by saying that one of the issues that probably wouldn't be addressed most nights, but I think maybe needs to be addressed tonight, is that for the second meeting that I've attended on this issue, the vast majority of speakers are opposed to this project. In the preceding meeting I attended, there might have been one or two speakers in favor, but the clear majority were opposed and today, no one from this audience said that they were going to be speaking in favor. So kind of raises the question of, although this is a small sampling of the public that is here tonight, could it possibly be that there's more to this than what we've heard so far tonight? I wanted to also say that at that last meeting, Andy Brickler, who is the president of the Highlands Historic District, brought up the point that the city had not done much of anything to engage the community with this issue prior to the hearing. And I'm afraid that's happened again here tonight. I'm kind of disappointed that maybe we'll only have about a half dozen people speaking in opposition to this. But it's not enough to send out a notice only to people living within 200 feet of the project. I understand this is standard, but the city needs to look at that. There needs to be a way to get the word out to people that, hey, city council tonight is going to have a big, big issue to address and it's going to impact the city. Okay, now, I've lived here in Middletown for 43 years. I taught for many years at Miami Middletown. Forty-one of those 43 years, I've lived near or on Central Avenue and I know Central Avenue pretty well. To me, it is the Champs-Elysees of Middletown. It's quite a, quite an artery. It's the one artery that runs right up the middle of the city from east to west and the only other one that comes close to it is Grand Avenue, which could use a good bit of repaving. So people choose Central and they stick with it. But also here at this intersection that we're talking about is Schaefer, which takes you up onto Route 4 and all the way to Germantown and beyond. So if we're looking at a development that's going to have 59 units and the estimate is maybe 80 vehicles that are going to be part of the lives of the residents who live there, it's not going to be enough, I'm afraid, to dismiss all the traffic issues that are coming up with this by talking about trip generation data. It's not enough to say, as is shown in the document tonight, that, oh, we figure it'll only be about 46 trips generated and you need 50 to trigger a traffic study, so let's not even do that. What I've heard so far tonight is dismissive of the issues of traffic. And I think city council members, if you have not really studied what Jennifer Chen had to say in her extensive study of the traffic issues involved here, I urge you to do so because she does quite a detailed job of covering what's at stake here. One other thing I wanted to mention was, as I look at council tonight, you're all different from those who took up the D.R. Horton Old Hospital site. All of you are new to city council and we're not city council members there. Now, my memory might be a bit faulty, but I think that the number one reason why that was turned down was because of traffic and issues raised there are familiar to the issues that might be raised tonight. The thing though was that people were concerned about streets like Sherman and Florence and Orchard. Now we're talking about Central Avenue and Schaefer, which turns into Route 4, right at the heart of the Central Avenue corridor that has been promoted in city documents. So my question for you is, and I think this is a question to look at, if in the end, the city voted against a project that would put 53 homes on 15 acres? How do we fit 59 homes onto five and a half acres at a more congested intersection than, say, Sherman and Florence? So those are the thoughts that I wanted to toss out to you and I thank you for your time and consideration.
Thank you. And who's next, please? Right here? Thank you. Please do adjust the microphone for yourself and then please speak directly into it and then please state your full name, address first, and then you can confirm you've been sworn in.
My name is Pamela O'Brien. I live at 2214 Linden Avenue, which is the fifth house from Schaefer.
Have you been sworn in?
There is no way.
Would you please confirm that you were sworn in?
Huh?
Would you please confirm that you were sworn in?
I was.
Okay, that works. Thank you.
There is no way all of those cars are going to stay in that area. It's way too dense. If you look at the seven houses that were built along Schaefer, what, 10, 12 years ago, that have stayed nice, have had no turnover? And then you look right behind it and you're going to put five times as much in the same space? It doesn't make any sense. And the picture that you sent us in the mail doesn't show those other six units which will be facing Schaefer, which is going to bring more traffic down Linden Avenue, which we certainly don't need, or, I'm sorry, it's Edgewood there. And then where are all their boats and their campers and all the other things that these people, these 59 units are going to have? It just doesn't make sense to me. I'm disgusted. I'm finished.
Thank you. And could hands be raised again so I can see who wishes to speak against? Okay, we'll go right here with Mr. Mormon. Thank you again. Please do adjust the microphone. Speak directly into it, please, and then go ahead and please state your name and address and then confirm that you were sworn in.
I'm Jay Mormon, 203 Stanley Street, and yes, I've been sworn in.
Thank you.
Being called last is, pretty much everything has been said that I feel. I've been in my home for 40 years on Stanley, which this project backs right up to. The old hospital was there for 20 years of the time I've been there and that was always an asset that all of the doctors and professional people lived around because the hospital was right there where they worked. And when that got moved, somehow I feel council let us down because now it's nothing, a field of weeds that are shoulder-high and I don't, I haven't seen any kind of remediation on that. But on this project, I'm an artist and we're known all over the world. We're the oldest stained glass studio in the United States and how I've survived 40 years in Middletown is 5% of my work is from Middletown. We do work all over the world and like Linda said earlier, we have bus tours every month that come from all over the country. Point to that is, we're unique, we're something to be proud of and that's what lasts. And I'm, I feel this is not going to fit. There, the reason we bought our home was because they all had yards and we had a beautiful yard and I was opposed to putting the development at the old hospital because it was going to be too congested, too many homes in one area. And this is like on steroids. So I mean, that's about all I got to say, other than you guys sit there from choice and you're going to make decisions for me and I just want you to be vigilant and understand that these are our homes. This is what I've, I've been there 40 years and I love it and I've put everything, business, family here in Middletown and I ask you to make your best decision and I'd rather say I wish we had done that than I wish we hadn't. Thank you.
Thank you. Who's next, please? Raise hands. Ms. Mormon? Oh, Mrs., that's fine. Please do adjust the microphone for yourself and please do speak directly into it. Please first state your name and address.
My name is Ashley Yoder. I'm at 2607 Sherman Avenue.
Thank you. And have you been, please confirm you've been sworn in?
I have.
Thank you.
I moved to Middletown back in 2022 and I've recently become a real estate agent over the past few years. And I'm glad that Ms. Carter, or Mrs. Carter, I'm not sure, brought up the point of affordable housing. $300,000 is not affordable. I'm looking at our properties right now on the MLS and they're ranging anywhere between $119,000 and $300,000, mostly in the $200,000-$250,000 range. And these are for single-family homes. These are not for condos, they're not for townhomes. I apologize, I'm a little shaky because I wasn't planning on speaking tonight. But I'm even looking at two new builds here. One's at 249.9 and the other one's at $350,000. We've got to provide affordable housing for our people here. I represent buyers on the most side, most of the time. And typically, they're looking around $250,000 and they're able to get these three-bedroom, two-bathroom homes in that price range, whether it's new or it's existing. So as a resident who lives very close by, I would hope that we consider the density of this population, require certain pricing points on these because $300,000 for a town home is just excessive. I'm a firm believer that everybody deserves a good home and unfortunately, at this price, I feel like this is just kind of highway robbery. I live on Sherman and I already have trouble turning left out here on Alameda Circle. And so with the density, even if you decide to move forward with this, I ask that you consider maybe a roundabout or something in order to make it so that people can turn left and right where they need to. And that's all I have. So I hope you all have a great night. Thank you. I appreciate it.
Thank you very much. Ms. Mormon, would you like to speak next? Please do adjust the microphone for yourself and please speak directly into it. Go ahead and please state your full name and address again.
Linda Mormon, 203 Stanley Street, and I have been sworn in.
Thank you.
This is too many houses. We have been there 40 years. We love our neighborhood. Everybody loves the neighborhood and there's just too many, that's too much. So if you go down, down here somewhere, you can see the Alameda Circle, you can see Stanley, there's only four houses from the corner to the Alameda Circle in my neighborhood. So then we have what's going around the corner that Mr., he was talking about, his house, and there's only about two, two, maybe three houses. And then you have John's house that takes up the whole circle. This is way wrong for our neighborhood. I'm not against it, it's just too many houses. It's just like, it's all about the dollars, all about making money. It should be about our home, our city, making it proud. I don't think that that's going to make us all proud. It'll, it'll make a lot of money for somebody, but it's not going to make the neighborhood any better. It's probably, I think it's going to make it worse. And I cut my own grass and I, we walk around the block and look, I just don't think this is going to be good for the neighborhood. Something there, okay, this is too much, too, too many houses. And you talk, all this talk about the fire truck doesn't have enough space. One person dies because a fire truck can't make it? You guys aren't going to be happy. You'll never be able to live with that. Paul's, Paul's went to the fire department, he's seen a lot. Santa Parade, it was always about, can the fire truck make the turn? So I keep hearing this and I'm thinking, this isn't good right by my house. The fire truck can't make a turn? Somebody dies? Something should go there, but it just, it sounds like it's too small already because we're trying to put too many houses in it because we can't get a fire truck in there, guys. because we're trying to put too many houses in it, because we can't get a fire truck in there, guys. Think about it. Thank you.
Thank you. Please raise your hands for those who want to speak opposed. Please approach the podium. Please do adjust the microphone and speak directly into it. Please state your full name and address first.
My name is Jennifer Chen. I'm at 23 Santa Fe Road.
And please confirm that you've been sworn in.
I was sworn in.
Thank you. Please commence.
Well, first of all, because I can't do PowerPoint, I have some things that I would like to give you to look at, if that's okay.
Mr. Conover, does one need to be also given to Mr. Cristo?
Um, I didn't bring him up.
I think it's fine.
It's fine? Okay. Thank you.
Um, I'd also like to point out that several weeks ago-
Please speak into the microphone. Yeah, go ahead and adjust it for yourself.
Several weeks ago, I think a month almost by now, I had requested that this chamber have a, be brought up to ADA standards and have a place that people can sit when they present, if necessary, which includes me. I'll try to do it standing. So I wanted to start out saying that nothing that I say here about city staff applies to our two new planners, Ms. Perkins and Ms. Fetter. They weren't here for the development of this. I'm not opposed to multifamily housing. I'm not opposed to development. My father was a developer. That was our family business. He even rubbed shoulders with Adam Cristo Senior. I am concerned about the long-term impacts of a development of this density on the traffic safety on Central Avenue, on the Highland Historic District, and on adjacent properties. Based on my personal experience and education, putting this development here will start the surrounding neighborhoods on a sequence of property devaluations. And the very problem we have of out-of-town investors buying those properties and renting them will be perpetuated. And so you don't see me here complaining about all of the housing being dealt with Middletown. I'm here because all of my years of training and experience and education and decades of observation have given me the knowledge and perspective to look at a proposal like this and see not only the internal details of the proposal, but the big picture and the consequences of this development. Right. So this is, I just added this part. The housing study that Mr. Cristo references was not a housing study. That was a market study for some particular projects. It was not an actual housing study, which would inventory existing housing in the city. It would take demographic data, current and projected population, meaning ages, household income, household size, income of households, and then project the housing needs of the entire city, everybody. Um, the last time an actual housing study was done was, I think, 2016. And I believe that according to Ashley Combs during a planning commission meeting around 2018, she had contacted the consultant for that, who said at that time, the survey was no longer valid, or study was no longer valid. So that was by 2018 or so, that study was not valid. Nevertheless, the data and projections from that 2016 housing study were lifted as-is and plugged into the comprehensive plan in 2022. So the comprehensive plan was based on data that was already five years out of date. It was also not based on any demographic data or projections either. None. So you cannot rely on this, the housing, the comprehensive plan part, housing chapter of the comprehensive plan as a basis for any decisions about housing in the city. The housing market study referenced had several huge flaws. It assumed that the housing costs for residents would be fifty percent of their income, which is ridiculous. It's supposed to be thirty percent. But they were, all these findings were based on this idea that people would spend fifty percent of their income on housing. It excluded, in one tiny little paragraph, it said that it excluded the sixty percent of Middletown households that want a home of two hundred and fifty thousand dollars or less. And it used the county average of house of income of ninety-nine thousand dollars, which you have to use for certain affordable housing calculations. County is ninety-nine thousand. The average household income in Middletown is fifty thousand. It's half that. So the whole thing is based on people having twice as much household income as people in Middletown actually have. Okay. Also keep in mind, this development is the brainchild of city staff. The developer is doing what they have asked. He said that at the planning commission hearing. City, he's, he's going back and forth with city staff. City staff cannot objectively review their own project, or at the very least, they haven't. If you focus solely on the particulars of the, just that map before you, the details within the property, you miss the bigger picture of how this will fit into and impact surrounding neighborhoods in the city as a whole, including financial impacts. So I'm here because this proposed development of fifty-nine units is a completely incompatible with this particular site due to surrounding uses of the outdated transportation infrastructure. Pick it up and put it somewhere else with up-to-date roadways that can handle it, with enough room to allow emergency vehicles to have ingress and egress next to open land or similarly dense development. I'm gonna give it a hands, a thumbs up. Uh, when you, B, when you took your oath of office as a council member, you swore that you would support the US and Ohio constitutions, the laws of the state of Ohio, and the charter and ordinances of Middletown. This proposed development violates several basic city ordinances, which I will detail later. The Development Code is part of the codified ordinances of Middletown. Those ordinance were developed over a span of decades and approved by council constantly. The last major overhaul of the development ordinances was in 2018. These, these are ordinances, laws. It is responsibility- What? Oh, I was, it's a responsibility of staff to conduct the business of the city in keeping with those city ordinances, which they haven't here. And contrary to the claims of staff, this proposed development is not compatible with the comprehensive plan as adopted by the Planning Commission and Council in 2022. And I'd like to start there because it is fundamental to understanding how this came into being. When the comprehensive plan was reviewed by the Planning Commission, they approved it contingent on the removal of anything that might indicate that multifamily development on any of the school sites was acceptable. They agreed unanimously that such housing, it was inappropriate for those sites. Their intent was that those sites should have single-family housing. They stipulated that the concept drawings and multifamily language for those sites should be completely removed from the plan before going to council. And it was reiterated repeatedly and at the very end of that meeting. Um, and if you would like to see that transcript, I can provide it to you. The Planning Commission meant single-family housing as defined in the Development Code. That's the first and second pages you have there. On the first page contains the- Okay. Those, the first and second pages have the definitions from Chapter 1230 of the Development Code, which again are city ordinances. These are the definitions of where single-family and multifamily dwellings and condominiums. These are the legal definitions of the types of dwellings approved by council for this city. Um, on the first page, you have condominiums. Condominiums, which are also called townhomes, are defined outright as multifamily. On the second page, you have the other types of dwellings. And single-family dwellings are defined as physically unconnected with any adjacent homes. Based on that definition, any dwelling with even a single shared wall is defined legally as multifamily. I'm not pointing these definitions out to suggest that single-family dwellings are my preference. They are the preferences of the Planning Commission and Council that approved the comprehensive plan. City staff told Mr. Lawley that the Planning Commission had approved single-family attached on those sites. They did no such thing. I mean, as you can see, there is no such thing as a single-family attached in city ordinances. The very definition of single-family makes that impossible. Mr. Lawley had just begun his role as city manager and had to rely on information from city staff. They either lied to him, or they hadn't read the definitions of the very code they were hired to enforce. When the comprehensive plan was before council, council emphasized that they wanted those sites to have single-family housing. Council meant single-family housing as defined by most human beings in the United States, with the exception of very large old cities like New York and Chicago. That is dwellings that don't share a wall, consistent with the Development Code. They specifically pushed back on the idea that condominiums were single-family housing. So when they tell you that this is an agreement with the comprehensive plan, that's only through subterfuge and leaving multifamily dwellings in the text in defiance of both Planning Commission and Council's stipulation that those should be single-family detached. They actually took out the concept drawings and the word multifamily, but they left duplexes, triplexes, fourplexes, townhomes, condominiums. Those are all multifamily. Uh, it's not the role of city staff to create extrajudicial undefined dwelling types and use them to justify putting multifamily housing on sites where single-family, as defined in the code, were intended by council and the Planning Commission. They have been gaslighting the Planning Commission and Council for the last three years that, that there's such a thing as single-family attached, and it is single-family, not multifamily. They have even argued with the Planning Commission that attached dwellings are single-family. Their role and responsibilities is to follow the code as written. Within months of the comprehensive plan being approved, city staff put out a request for qualifications in which they specified multifamily residential. Those words on those sites, months after. Counsel be damned, residents be damned, neighbors of the sites be damned, forget them. During the D.R. Horton Fasco fiasco, Mr. Cahill told me that residents are going to be opposed to any change. They just don't understand these things. I take offense at that mindset. I vehemently disagree with it. So no, it is not in agreement with the comprehensive plan as approved by the Planning Commission and Council who clearly thought that the school sites should have a single-family housing. Moving on, this proposed development violates the codified ordinance of Middletown that you were, that you swore to uphold, and the staff is obligated to enforce. Developments like this are governed by several parts of the Development Code, all of which stem from Sections 1204.07 and 1226.04. You have copies of the relevant portions in front of you. The first section defines a planned unit development, and the latter specifies the procedures and criteria for reviewing planned unit developments. Planned unit developments must also meet other requirements for residential developments, such as architectural requirements, as well as Chapter 1026, which specifies the minimum infrastructure design criteria that all new developments must meet. The city has an engineering manual design for public improvement, which applies to all new developments, including planned developments. So Section 1204.07 that defines has the definition of a planned unit development. Um, the first two pages are just for context. It's the third page of that. So the definition and minimum criteria for planned unit developments are laid out by ordinance in those definitions, or reg, regulations are called, zoning district regulations. This is by law. This law requires that planned unit developments be compatible with surrounding uses. Because those uses were there first, and the planned unit development must be compatible with them. This compatibility includes style and type, as well as density or units per acre. Regarding style and type, there are no multifamily or single-family attached, if you want to use that, complexes anywhere near this site, anywhere. There are a couple of individual duplexes or fourplexes, but these are scattered and not grouped together. There are no houses joined together like this, nor are there any residences that I could find with garages across the entire front of the building, almost. So this proposed development is completely incompatible with surrounding existing uses in terms of both style and type. Moving on, Section 1204.07 gives very specific criteria for the density of dwelling units, dwellings in planned, planned unit developments. Per city ordinance, the density or the number of dwelling units per acre of a planned unit development may not exceed by more than ten percent the density of surrounding properties. The site is surrounded on the west and south by single-family detached homes with a density of about six dwelling units per acre. To the east, there are single-family detached homes with a density of about two dwellings per acre. The lower density is a standard. Based on this, the maximum density of a planned unit development on this parcel may not exceed 2.2 dwelling units per acre. The density of this proposed development is approximately 10.3 dwelling units per acre, nearly five times the maximum density allowed by city ordinance. However, the code also incorporates the standard planning practice, good planning practice, of allowing a higher transitional density for a new development like this between two existing adjacent developments with different densities, which is what we have here. Per city ordinance, a higher density than adjacent develop, may be allowed of the proposed development will serve as a transition between an adjacent lower-density development and a higher-density development. That doesn't mean any higher density. It means a density between the lower densities and the higher densities on either side. This is to ensure that neither existing adjacent development suffers the negative impact, particularly on property values, of adjacent development that is significantly denser. You just don't do it. The fact that city staff is recommending that you approve a development in violation of this ordinance, which reflects good planning practice, is why I say, I don't think they know what they're doing. So just summarize, to put a development with 10.3 dwelling units per acre directly obiding an area with a density of two dwelling units per acre, is not only bad, bad planning practice, it is not allowed by city ordinance. The density should be four dwelling units, maximum of twelve, four unique dwelling units per acre, not ten. So turning to Chapter 1026. This establishes that new developments must meet the minimum standards specified in the Middletown Manual of Design for Public Improvements. This manual applies to things like stormwater, sanitary sewers, water mains, and roadways. Manual design requires a site access evaluation, which addresses site distance and traffic control at all access points, and is required of all new developments and major alterations of existing developments. As far as the traffic study, this project meets several of the criteria for a Tier Two traffic study. I meant to bring those details and read some of them to you, but I forgot it. Additionally, Section 1026.04 on access management states, "Access management, management provides or manages access to land while simultaneously preserving the flow of traffic on the surrounding road systems in terms of safety, capacity, and speed." It continues that even though existing roadways do not meet these standards, for the prevention of future, of the future breakdown of the balance between mobility and access function, it is required that the city follow the regulations for all future access permits. So the manual design specifies the minimum spacing between intersections. According to those regulations, for a collector's street like Central Avenue with a posted speed limit of thirty-five miles per hour, the minimum distance between intersections should be seven hundred and fifty feet. In the seven hundred and fifty feet encompassing the Lincoln site, there are already five intersections and a crosswalk. Extend it to eight hundred and fifty feet and you have six intersections. This development will add a seventh intersection and a second crosswalk. This is already a crash-prone area, as illustrated on the next page that you have, I think, page as, there's two pages. The section of Central Avenue from Belmont to the west side of the railroad tracks has one of the highest concentrations of accidents on all of Central Avenue. There are several factors that contribute to this higher accident rate. All twenty-three intersections on Central Avenue from Sutton to Highview are T intersections, with the exception of Schaefer. And with the exception of Schaefer, they have stop signs, which means drivers turn at their own discretion. And because they're T intersections, they turn left or right, and they are turning from a complete stop into thirty-five mile-per-hour unimpeded traffic. The sheer number of intersections and the random turning means that traffic- The sheer number of intersections and the random turning means that traffic doesn't follow a predictable pattern, making turning judgment calls very different. I think on the next page, I have a map that I tried my best to illustrate this mess. It includes distances between streets and the multitude of left and right turns occurring in this 850-foot stretch. Especially if you look, especially right at the, just west of Schaefer to just east of Lincoln, it's a mess. I couldn't do it neatly because there's so many conflicting right and left turns. It's just impossible. Another consideration is that westbound vehicles turning into the Lincoln site will block westbound traffic. This section of Central Avenue does not have a center lane, and there is no room to add one. As you can see on the last page, this site is in the last stretch of Central Avenue before it widens at Belmont. Buildings are very close to the street. There's no room left to widen the street. The vacant land directly across from the street, across from Lincoln's site, might have been used to widen the road to Adel Turn Lane. It used to be city-owned, but you approved the sale of those lots earlier this year, and there are already homes being built on them. One other thing that came up, what other people were talking about. I think it's called Downtown Middletown Plan. Has Central Avenue as the preferred route for people to take into Downtown Middletown. There's not enough room already, and there's no room, clearly, once you get down to Belmont and in. It'll just be, I mean, people already avoid it. I avoid driving through there. I go around. And that's another aspect, that when this becomes so congested and so difficult, people are going to turn and go through back streets, residential streets, which aren't designed for that, in order to avoid this mess. I think that's it. There are significant issues regarding traffic generated by development of this density at this particular site. I urge you to not make a decision on this preliminary plan, or on this thing as a whole, until you have a full traffic study, preferably Tier Two, that will properly identify these issues, what mitigations would be necessary to make ingress and egress from this site safe, and what that would cost. This, believe it or not, is a very condensed version of all the information they have. If you are interested in more detailed information, you have my email. One last thought that I just saw. There are other possibilities for this site. To the east, just before the jug, I think, there's Sycamore Terrace. That is about the same size. Actually, it's slightly smaller than this Lincoln site, and it has, I think, eight houses on it. It's a very nice secluded little place. So that's another possibility to do here that would meet the transitional density requirements. Thank you. That's all I have.
Thank you. Is there anybody else who would like to speak in opposition to the development? Okay, seeing none, we will continue. And Mr. Kristo, applicant, one last time. You are welcome to the podium if you'd like to speak. Please state your full name.
Yes, my name is Alex Batch. I'm with Bear Becker, and I've been sworn in.
Thank you.
I want to try to address some of the comments that I heard tonight, some of the big ones. Just to talk briefly on the traffic study itself. Actually, maybe more generally, there were some comments about detailed plans and landscape plans and things of that nature. Those aren't typically provided at this preliminary level. This is a concept plan submittal, so what you're seeing really in terms of landscaping is conceptual. There are some amenities shown that will be provided at the next level, but in terms of landscape plans, grading plans, utility layouts, things of that nature, traffic studies, if they're to be required, that would all happen at the next levels, the final plan submittal, and then the construction drawing submittals.
Yes, Mr. Horn? Absolutely, I hear you. If, actually, let's make it 10. We'll take 10-minute break if that works for you. No, please. I was thinking about that for everyone, too. So 7:54, we will return. Thank you.
I've been thinking about this stuff. I hear you. I try to do something every time, but thank you, Paul.
And are we good? Okay, thank you. If you would please to say your name again.
Alex Betch with Payer Becker. All right, Councilmember Horn, don't drink any more water until we're done here. Yeah, just as I was saying, so this is a concept plan level submittal here. This will go back for final plan submittal with more detailed drawings. And it'll come back to Planning Commission if I'm correct for another public hearing and a vote there to approve that. So everyone will have an opportunity to come back and review those more detailed plans, which will include landscape drawings. In terms of the density, one point I did just want to mention on this. The current zoning on this is R4 attached residential, which allows for multifamily dwellings in buildings of up to four units. Which is basically what's shown on the applicant's proposed plan here. However, the site development standards for that district are written in a way that, with the minimum lot standards, that allow for multiple dwelling units on one individual parcel. So it's more difficult to do owner occupied units on their own individual lot in that scenario. Because there would be a four unit building on one lot. So it lends itself more to either a condo situation or rental properties. And so the applicant wanted to go through the PUD process so that they could work with staff, be more creative with the plan. But also so that they could do owner occupied units on individual lots. Wanted to touch on the basin as well. So one of the comments was in regard, the staff comments was in regard to the proximity of that basin to Central Avenue. We did agree that we can shift that back, if you see that buffer that's shown along Central Avenue. In our design, we were, we did pay homage to the setback on that house that's on the corner of Alameda Circle and Central Avenue. You can see it's set back further than the houses to the west of the property. We wanted to make sure that our units, one and, I can't read the other one, but 53, thank you. Were set back that same distance to allow for that, that open space green buffer along Central Avenue. Would allow for more landscaping in between there. And the basin in detailed design, we're hopeful can pull back further as well to allow for that landscape extension in front of it. And also, the applicant agreed to do fencing along it, along the front side of that to create a more aesthetically pleasing streetscape there as well. One last note on the buffer between the houses on the Alameda side of the property, the eastern edge of the property there. We were also, in the design of the street, the width in particular and in our setbacks. We wanted to make sure we maximized that rear setback between the units and that eastern property line as much as possible. And so if you're working from the north to the south, there's a range of between 40 to 60 feet of rear setback there between those units. And once we get into the detailed drawings, you know, the existing vegetation and trees that are along that property line would remain. And there's a hillside that kind of slopes down into the property. We try to preserve that as much as possible. We'll know more to the extent of that at the next phase. Just wanted to mention that as well. Adam, did you want to?
Sure. Just to reiterate, I think Alex's first point, that straight zoning without coming to council. This is zoned R4, so the same layout as condominiums could be approved without going through the PUD or council approval process. And we chose to go this route again because we very well think this is an asset. And we wanted for sale property that people own the ground underneath them rather than a condominium. Obviously, we didn't want to do rentals. That was another route with straight zoning that could be done here. I think that's what everyone needs to understand. This is zoned identity attached. That is what the staff and the will comprehensive plan, I don't know, that's what the property has been zoned. Now, we've got into this whole attainable housing conversation. And you have to understand, we're only going to sell at a price on what the market is willing to pay. We can't just make up a price and people buy it. And our goal is to be as attainable as possible. We're the, one of the few builders that still builds first time home buyers, home houses. Because it's so difficult to keep costs down in this environment. Everyone's seeing the inflation, the skyrocketing numbers at the grocery everywhere. The costs are outrageous, even employment, material shortages, having to pay extra for it. So it's a real issue and you see it across the country. I mean, you see multiple municipalities now allowing for auxiliary structures to be built on the same lot. We're in a national crisis, a housing crisis. And a lot of that is stemmed from cost drivers, inflation that we're faced with. So we can get these more attainable, but again, this is at the preliminary. We don't have construction drawings on the layout of the subdivision. We don't know the requirements of the pipe. We don't know the support mechanisms that we're gonna, you know, where the city's gonna be at. So there's so much unknown, but our goal is we have to be competitive with the surrounding housing stock. And at this point, we don't know if we're gonna be able to, I mean, a lot of the naysayers may be happy because we don't know if we're gonna make this work. It's very difficult because we are looking at 300, you know, hopefully go lower. But then we have homes with twice the square footage all around us for selling for 300. So it's a, it is a, it is a very difficult place. So we do need to be very creative to make sure we're a value. If not, we don't sell, we lose. And it's very tight in this business. This isn't just, you know, a fun business everyone gets into and, you know, makes a lot of money. It's very difficult and there's a significant amount of risk. DR Horton came here, I think they were up to 450 two years ago, and that was on detached homes. I mean, new housing, new development, infrastructure is very costly. Middletown needs new housing stock. If you want less density, it's gonna be at a higher price. You know, every unit you would remove, let's say, you know, say, hey, if you could take off two, that would, each unit would increase every house by 5,000 bucks roughly, every time you remove a unit. So, you know, you're going the opposite way. It's like, if you want new housing and you want it attainable, you're gonna need to have the density. If you don't, you can't have attainable housing and you really won't have any new housing because the surrounding property values in the market doesn't work. That's why there hasn't been any development. My father built those, those eight houses, he built, I think, 25 years ago. I mean, that was the last, I think, multiple housing built in Middletown. So, I mean, I think there needs to be a coming of the minds on what Middletown wants. Do they want new housing or not? And if they do, they have to make peace with density, or it won't get built. It just won't. Unless there's major subsidies, the city's willing to, you know, subsidize the entire house. I mean, it's just, it's, you know, you saw the RFP, there wasn't, you know, I think there's one other person coming in. It's not like people are running here to try to make money and develop in Middletown. Because the numbers in the market are difficult. So I just wanted to make sure you understood that.
Thank you. Okay, so this concludes the public comment period. This closes the public comment period. And of the public hearing, I just want to make that very, very clear, this no more public comment. And now council deliberations will begin. There are no interruptions during council deliberations, but we do encourage you to stay through as there will, even though there will be no further comment. So now it's time for council to speak. Any comments, questions to begin? Mr. Horn?
I guess I just want to make a bit of a statement. To me, we have three types of living areas or living types, types in Middletown. We have, we're having development of apartments, which I think we have one that's trying to get through the system. And there are about 314 units in one area. Then we have these that we're looking at Lincoln Heights, which is however you want to describe it, a townhome, a condo. And then we have Roosevelt Ridge, which is houses, which is a detached, has some grass around and everything else. And we need all three types of these homes. Because it's kind of almost like where you are in your life. Sometimes you start out an apartment or in a home that you're renting. And then you move to a home, be it used. Or if you do whatever you have to do to get that loan, then you move into this situation. Or you go from there to maybe even attached, a detached home. And then sometimes over time you go in reverse and you go back to something necessary. So I understand folks with the density portion of this. But what's funny, and I was going to mention that, I didn't know your father built those. But those homes on Edgewood, which if you look at them, and I'm sure if we went back to the notes back then, the folks who lived in that, over in the other area might not have been as happy if those were being built. I remember looking at them. It just wasn't the design that I particularly liked, but those were new homes. And I want to say, and this is just going by memory, so no one quote me here. But a new home back then was about $150,000, $200,000. When people say, oh, $300,000 for a new home, that's the new number. Just like the new number for a loan is going to be between 5 and 7%. My parents probably bought a home at 13%, but that was 1970 something. So it's kind of like you have to adapt and adjust with what the cost is. And if you want a new home, meaning this, that's the first, you're the first person to move in, there's a cost to that. And I appreciate when folks come in and try to develop areas that need to develop because that school just sat there and then we had some land. And I do appreciate all the citizens who say, okay, now, but we want to have a voice in this and we have a concern about this. I get that too. But this is one of the things that we have to work with, is that we have to have the ability to say, we want Middletown to grow. I've said it many times here, that over the next 10 years, and just watch it happen, from 675 to 275, this area is going to boom. And everyone says Middletown is, it's their turn. It is our turn. But the thing is, they're not gonna wait. They're not gonna say, okay, well, let Middletown boom and then we'll do our part. No. I mean, you're seeing even over in the, across from Shaker Run, another farmer decided to say, we're done. And you see a housing development going there. So my point is, is that we need these different levels. We need the apartment structures where people want to be close to each other, be at the beginning of their adulthood or toward the end. Because when you get a little older, maybe you don't want to even deal with any type of grass. But then we also need the townhome condo because sometimes people just want the HOA to take care of it. But they still want that homeownership and then maybe they move into that home that's next. But that's, that's why we're encouraging developers to come here, to give good quality homes. We've actually even made changes within our architectural design, just so we have good quality homes. Specifically that first floor no longer can be vinyl, so we want good homes to be built here. And this still being at the preliminary, this is not the final decision, it goes back to Planning Commission. But we need to consider this as, is this, do we want to continue to move forward? Or do we want to just continue to stay where we're at?
Thank you. Any other comments or questions?
I just have a couple of things. Initially, a lot of people want to compare this development to the DR Horton one. The DR Horton one, in my opinion, was completely different, especially when you look at the historic district. That development was in the center of Highland Heights. The entry and exit to that development was right in the middle of Highland Heights. For those that, that may not realize, I was one of the most vocal people in the community, because that is my community, that fought it. And there were all these yard signs that popped up, speaking out against it. And those were my yard signs. I went down to Digital Visuals and told Debbie to load up the printer. That particular project, there were a number of issues. A lot of people say it was traffic, it was density, it was everything. It was all of the above. It was access in and out, street width. The, the homes themselves were only going to sit a few feet back from the proposed street coming in there. Lots of issues. So I don't want to make the comparison to the DR Horton site compared to this school site. Couple of things, I understand the concern for density. I mean, I get that. However, you know, with reality, I mean, I could ask, Adam, I won't answer for you. But, you know, you propose to the site, right? So especially when we look at this particular site, I get why the number is at 59 units. If there was more room on the site, it would, it would potentially be 70 units, right? There, but when we look at it, and I think Adam made a really good point on his final dissertation. You know, they chose the route to go through the PUD. So in reality, let's just say, let's play this game. If we were to say, no, let's not do this, in reality, you could have a developer go in there under R4 and still build things, right? So at least this route, there is a sense of limited, but we have some control, right? Owner occupied, things like that. Would I like there to be fewer units? Sure. What would that number be? Don't know. But I also understand that in this economic climate, when you, when you bring in the materials and you start building, you have that number, right? You have that number. I don't really think, even if it's 280, 290, to 320, whatever that resulting sale price would be to the first buyer. That is, it is what it is. Unless it's subsidized, I mean, there's, affordable housing is a myth in this country. If there's not any other subsidies coming in, it's a complete myth. Why would you build a product just to lose on it, right? It doesn't make sense. You're gonna get your money one way or another. And if it's only coming from the buyer, then it's, it's going to be at the market value. But I look at it, I, you know, I understand, I know a lot of the people in the Highlands, that's my neighborhood, it's my community. I don't see the comparisons with the DR Horton with this one. Which I will say, I saw the Mormons left, but there, that land is still privately owned. So even though it is outgrown and it's, we call it Coyote Pass in the neighborhood. Unfortunately, it's not city owned, so we, you know, don't beat up staff about that. But on this particular, on the Lincoln site, I did have a couple of questions. One, with the detention pond, was there any reason it couldn't be moved elsewhere in there? I don't know, am I allowed to ask questions at this point?
Yeah, we can call, we can call him up. Who would like to answer that question? Okay, great, thank you.
I know there's probably an engineering answer to this, but I was just curious if having it on that corner on Central.
Right, yeah. So, you know, we'll do the grading plan at the next level, but, you know, we do some preliminary analysis. And it was proposed in, at the lowest point in the site, basically. Where the elevation there is about 670. The remainder of the site sits higher. It varies from 680 to 686 along the eastern property line. And then I think it's 674 on the southern property line. And so in order to meet the drainage requirements of the city and the Ohio EPA, the basin needs to collect the runoff from the entire development site. Therefore, we put it at the lowest location on the property typically. The existing slopes also generally slope from east to west and then from south to north. And so placing it in the northwest corner, the post-developed site can retain the existing drainage patterns that exist today. And then it continues to send the stormwater at a regulated rate in the same direction that it goes currently. And so that's, you know, the most logical place for it is there, yeah.
I usually, when I'm driving past there, I can kind of tell there's a little bit of the natural slope, but I haven't really taken a hard look at it. But I figured that was probably the lowest, most convenient spot for it.
Right.
Thank you. And Adam, is your number 59 on this? Is that what you?
Yeah, I'm going to speak to the attainability of the project. I mean, rough numbers, every time you eliminate one unit, all the units go up 5,000. And you can just look, you can look at what we're proposing and the surrounding properties in the square footage. It's a tough sell right now. I mean, it's very difficult. We don't have the numbers back. So, you know, we, it's, it's, you know, I'm born and raised here, I am vested. We have multiple projects in Middletown. We want to see it succeed. We need new housing. I mean, when you come here, you know, employer, you know, people in this range, I mean, they have no, you know, no maintenance. I mean, you're not giving people options. I mean, it's a really missing vital component that you need new housing stock. And it needs to be attainable. I mean, if you're gonna raise the price and make it even more unattainable by cutting down the density, I mean, or they cut two, I mean, it's not gonna really make, you know, a difference other than raising the price up. The overlooking feel of it, it's gonna look the same. And then all you did is raise the average price 10, 15 more thousand or whatever that is. So, I mean, again, this is, it's gonna be a difficult project. We're still at the preliminary stage. We don't have all the costs in, you know, we don't have the engineering, you know, we don't know where we're at. We've done a lot of this, so we, it's in the realm, but it's tight. We know it's very tight. So I will, I'll put that to you, back to you in that regard, so.
Okay, thank you.
Could you stay there for just a moment? I have a question as well, unless anybody would like to go first, Mr. Cristo? Okay. Curious, what is the square footage per unit?
Roughly 1,600 square foot. It's a three bedroom, two and a half bass.
Thank you. Did you have a question for Mr. Cristo?
I can wait till you're done.
Oh, no, I'm done right now.
I just want to make a statement. You're finished.
Oh, I'm finished?
I want to remind people that this is a public hearing. And when it's a public hearing, statements you make become public record. And for the accusations to be made that this is the brainchild of city staff is nothing further from the truth. So Ms. Chin, when you make statements like that, being that this is a public hearing and that this is public record, you need to make sure what you say is factual. I have been involved in this from day one, from when the bricks came down. And I can tell you that the previous city council gave direction on what they wanted to see in the Roosevelt project, property and the Lincoln property. And this is the direction that staff went with. So this is not the brainchild of city staff. I'm getting a little bit impatient with accusations by Ms. Chin made towards city staff. And it needs to cease because these statements are untrue and not factual. And if you're going to make statements in public hearings, because they are public record, you need to state facts. Thank you.
Thank you. That was actually, I had a question similar. One of my questions first and foremost, I was wondering if Mr. Conover, you might speak to the role of council when it comes to the review criteria for the preliminary development, A through G. What exactly does, because I think this is related.
Yep.
What exactly is council's role and necessary statement when they're looking at the review criteria to vote?
Because some of the statements that are made start to get away from what they Because some of the statements that are made start to get away from what the public hearing is about, and you start to talk about other things. And I don't know, I for one, don't really understand why we don't have a time limit on, on.
Well, we don't, you can't have a time limit. But, but could you please?
We're a rural city, I wonder if we could.
We could discuss that. Um, not right now, but we could discuss that later. But Mr. Conover, could you please speak to the role of council when reviewing the review criteria?
Yeah, so, um, you know, this is a preliminary plan, a P D review for you all. Um, as has kind of been talked about, this is just kind of the initial plan, right? That outlines kind of generally where the, the, what, what the concept plan of what the, the site will look like. So, under the development code, there are A through G, I think, of the criteria that you have. They were up on the, on the, on the board. Um, they're not there now.
We put those on the board?
But, uh, I just don't have them memorized, so that's why I was kind of given the cue to go back, if we could, to the, to the review criteria.
Matt, can we go back to the review criteria, please, of the? Thank you, thank you. Mr. Conover.
Couple, nope, other way, other way. It's not going the other way, that's fine. Um, so, again, I, I, they're, they're in your staff packet, they're in the development code. Um, it's in twelve twenty-six point oh four. So that, a, as you guys know, is the development code. Th- those are the items that are essentially what you are considering in whether or not to approve the plan that is before you. Um, they, they get at different things. Um, for example, number, number A, it's fine, yep. Next, one more slide, I think. Two more slides. Three. They're at the end of this presentation. But anyways, so I, I'll just read the first one. So for example, it says, um, when you're, when you're looking at the review criteria, or the criteria should serve as conditions, that should be satisfied before approving the plan. So, A is the proposed development is consistent with the master plan and the other city adopted plans and the purpose of the development code. Um, so when you're looking at the plan, you're considering, how does this fit within our master plan? And, and any other, the comprehensive plan, um, things like that. B, the proposed development is necessarily desirable because of changing conditions, new planning concepts, or other socioeconomic conditions. So, um, no one factor is determinative here, um, but certainly something that you guys just kind of holistically, holistically look at as you're considering whether or not to approve this or not. So, that's ultimately what these review criteria are for. They're imposed upon you to con, to, to consider as you, um, consider approving or not this preliminary plan. And there will be other, other review criteria for different stages, right? For different types of plans, um, or different kind of legislative zoning actions you all may be taking, so.
The reason I ask is because one of my questions was, do we need to table and figure out if this is consistent or not? But I'll ask Nathan, from what Mr. Lally just said, it sounds like it is consistent. I'm sorry, Mr. Lally, yes. So that's my question. Do we need to figure this out, or is that not an issue?
I think, you know, I think as Mr. Conover said, you know, each five, all five of you are individually tasked with deliber, deliberating with yourself there, taking into consideration these seven review, uh, criteria principles and seeing more of holistically a preponderance of the evidence. Does it, does it meet these guidelines or not? This, this project's no different than any other in terms of, of your internal checklist to see whether or not it's in line with those, with those directives.
I was specifically asking just because it had been stated that, um, both staff, no, council had also wanted this to be, um, single family, I believe. But if council, as Mr. Lally was saying at the time, actually wanted it to be multifamily, then that changes that statement. Is that correct?
I, I can't speak to what was alleged earlier. I, I don't, I don't even think I was employed by the city at that point in time.
Gotcha. The reason I was asking is because if that's one of the review criteria, I'd like to know. And, um, so yeah, that's why I was asking. But it sounds, maybe Ms. Combs, um, it was council's wish of the time to have this be multifamily and not, to be R four, basically.
Are you talking about the comprehensive plan?
Correct, that, that was spoken of earlier.
Yes, this was supposed to be a multifamily site, that's correct.
And it is currently zoned R four for multifamily, so that criteria is met. A is met. Yes, okay, thank you.
And, and just to be, be clear, it, you don't have to go through and make like a finding for each of these. Um, it's just kind of, these are used to inform your decision as you kind of arrive at whatever that might be.
Because it's quasi-judicial, I think it's good to kind of have that conversation upfront. Thank you.
Do you have a question or just a clarification? So, Brody and also Claire, so this, all this, we went through all these in the preliminaries. Staff approved it. And the reason why they approved it, they brought it before, uh, Planning Commission. Planning Commission approved it and then shipped it to us. That's, that's accurate, is right?
Yeah, so, so staff would have made sure that it complied with like the technical requirements and included everything that's required by the development code, assuming that to be the case, which it was. It was then sent to Planning Commission, and Planning Commission, they're making a recommendation to you all, they're not actually approving it or not. Um, but they're, they, they did vote, you know, five-two to recommend approving the preliminary development plan here. So that's, that's what's, you know, just the, the next step in this process ultimately. Because, because the, the, the P D is really, it's a rezone of the property, right? So it will overlay on top of the existing zoning and be, you know, a new zone or zoning district. And that's what gets you the ability to kind of have this flexible, specific plans just for this property. Um, but yeah.
I just want to make sure that, that I'm, that we're all clear, that this has gone through the proper protocols, because at public hearing, people were saying that's not really the case here. But that was the, the protocols that we did that, and that staff went through this, they gave all the notifications. They said approved, then they put, they put it for our, to our advisory board, which is the Planning Commission. They voted five to two, uh, with some notes, addenda if you want to call it. And then we can say, yep, or, uh, we want this one, but not that one, because it comes to us. And then if we vote yes, then we push it back to, uh, Planning Commission. And this also, does this go to zoning also, or just go to Planning Commission after?
This would have only gone to Planning Commission.
Just, does that, you know, just want to make sure we're, we're following.
I think that the unique thing with this property, and also the Roosevelt site, as you all know, is that they were city-owned, right? And so there was the R F P put out however many years ago. So that's just kind of the only unique thing, and it doesn't change what's required on the zoning side of it, that's why we're here tonight. But that allowed the city council at the time, as Paul mentioned, or sorry, Mr. Lally mentioned, to kind of say, hey, this is what we would like to see in an R F P. The R F P was put together after that conversation, I mean, that's what was sent out. And so it doesn't, that, that R F P process doesn't really modify anything you guys are considering tonight. We're here just on kind of the ordinary rezone for a preliminary plan on a P D. Um, but that's just, that's the only unique way of it getting here, I guess, was that R F P process on the front end.
Well, my point, yeah, and I appreciate that. My, my point to even bring this up is, I want to be very clear that things do not get to Planning Commission and then to us just by, oh, let's just try that, you know? Or a developer saying, you know, here's something on a bar napkin, and let's push this through, through a preliminary. This is a process that we go through, and that staff works very hard on and makes sure that we are following laws, be it federal, state, county, city, uh, and all the ordinances. And that if they're going to approve it and then push it to, um, Planning Commission, which sits down, sits here and talks and hears public hearings multiple times sometimes, and then actually votes on it, that it is here for a reason and that, that it has, the boxes have been checked, is I guess is where I'll end that.
And I have, any other questions at this time? I have some, I was wondering if, um, is it, where is Claire Fetters or she is? Um, so these are going to be homeowners or owner occupied forever. That is a nodding yes by Mr. Cristo, so that's exciting. Thank you very much. Uh, you want to come to the, please, you, please come to the podium, yes, so we can have it on record.
Part of our agreement with the city is a deed restriction prohibiting rentals. Nathan, I think, if he wants to speak, verify that, but there is a deed restriction, that's, uh, when the city transfers title, that'll carry forward.
Okay, thank you. And, um, Ms. Fetters, would you please, or whoever would like to speak? Um, can we clarify what, again, what were the concessions, um, that, that Planning Commission was asking for? They wanted the traffic study, I believe. They wanted to know about what the fire chief said, which has already been talked about and approved, it sounds like, as long as it's paved. What was the third item? Right there? On the reduction of numbers, which is now a moot point, correct?
Yeah, so those were the three contingents.
Okay, and with, um, the traffic study, I am interested, because we've talked about it, the, we've had, we had a school there. Um, we've had a hospital down the street, and at, at one time, there's, there's always a school and a hospital, since I guess when the hospital was built. Do we need to have the traffic study is a question. It seems like a traffic study would be beneficial, even though it doesn't quite meet the criteria. Um, partly because of the perhaps like the left turn lane that was talked about in Planning Commission, or maybe a deceleration lane that was mentioned, mentioned by Mr. Cathall.
So that's going to be outside of what I'm going to have knowledge on. I believe Scott would be able to speak to that.
Okay.
Since that's going to fall under.
Thank you, Ms. Fetters. Miss, thank you. Mr. Tadic, please approach the podium.
We're going to have to swear Scott in.
Okay.
Scott, on your way down, right hand up. Do you swear to tell the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth?
Thank you.
Yeah, I think there would be some benefit to traffic study, just because it's so close to the threshold, based on the concerns pointed out, so.
Okay. So that would, and it does, it seems like there would be, it would be a good idea to do the traffic study, even though there has been, because I look at it and I'm like, oh, well, there's been a lot of traffic on the street, but then there are other concerns, like you said, so close.
Right, and forgive me, I have not looked at this development super close, so I don't want to speak out of line. But in general, since it is so close to the threshold, you know, there may be some justification to take a closer look.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Tadic.
Thank you.
I'm, I'm against that. If it doesn't meet the criteria of doing a traffic study, we, we've delayed this development here too long. We need to decide move, if it doesn't meet the criteria to have to do that, I don't see a need to do it.
I have a question.
Yes, Ms. Carter.
So I'm looking at this dwelling, single family, and the definition of a single family dwelling. So we just ignore that? How do we handle that, um, with the Middletown Development Code?
Uh, or do we ask staff?
So what?
Or, or law, let's ask Mr. Mr. Conover.
Yeah, so, um, essentially, in the preliminary, in a P D plan, or a planned unit development, y- you can not ignore the definitions of what a single family home is, but you're able to say, we understand that it's, you know, as a residential district may require a fam, a single family home, but we want it to be, you know, attached townhomes, or whatever the case may be here. So, um, the definition itself, it, it, the definition is the definition in the development code. But the, the point of the whole, the, the point of a P D district is to allow flexibility to put there what you want, and it doesn't fit within a existing zoning district. So, um, I, I concede that whatever you're reading is the definition of, of a single family home is in fact that. But I, I think what's being proposed here is essentially attached townhomes. I hope I'm not misrepresenting what I'm, you're saying, Adam. And he may want to comment to supplement that, if you would allow it.
Certainly.
There's always been, um, some confusion on that. So, a multi-unit dwelling is one that has multiple units on the same parcel. A single-family dwelling is one dwelling on a single parcel. That's single-family. That's, and that's what we're proposing here. The, the fact that it's attached is irrelevant as far as definition. Single-family is one dwelling on one parcel of land, what we're proposing. Any questions?
Physically unconnected within any adjacent homes occupied by a single housekeeping unit.
Yeah, I'm seeing the definition of single-family. Now, that, what, what there might be in your code, there might be.
It's in the code.
A, a variation, but if you say what a single-family home is, it is a single unit on one parcel of land. I mean, in, in, in that definition. So, I, if there's something on attached, Middletown's code is very difficult. We've been, we, I think we're on our fourth or fifth development, and in nowhere in the code, it allows for town home, um, construction. So every single, we've got four projects approved now. Every single one, um, that we wanted to have be on, single-family, be individually owned, we had to do the P U D process. On this particular parcel, we could have went straight zoning, either as rental or condominium, because it allows for that, but it doesn't allow for, and, and straight zoning for single-family parcels. But it does allow for multiple parcels or condominiums. It's just, I wish you'd get that corrected at some point.
That is a conversation.
But that's why we're here for the P U Ds.
Correct, and, um, also because it does, it's kind of confusing as well, because it does say R four, which does, so it's confusing in general. Um, I have a question about the, the fence that's going to be in front of the retention pond.
Yes.
So would that be extended across the entire property, or just in front of the pond, number one?
We, we, I mean, uh, so we, that was, uh, part of our agreement, Planning Commission. There was, I think there's some confusion as wet or dry, and that's why they wanted the fence, they thought someone had fallen it down. But regardless, we're, we're putting it up. So I think, you know, we probably want some symmetry, you know? I mean, we're so early, again, this is the preliminary. We probably would agree to some symmetry to have it on both sides to add for a, a nice symmetrical entrance.
Thank you. And another question was, uh, brought up by a resident was, do you know what kind of materials? I know it's preliminary, but the concern was they did not want chain link.
Oh, no, no, I mean, we could specify that, that wouldn't, I mean, we're, we're, we're here to market and, and be successful in chain link. You know, it would be anything from, you know, um, split rail to, uh, you know, a cedar painted fence, or, you know, it would be anything but, certainly not cha, chain link.
Then I had another question about the trees and the waiver. Um, in the drawing, I know, again, it is preliminary. Mr. Tadic from Public Works did mention how it might not meet the canopy. It looks like you have trees on the street, but not in the yards. Is that how it's going to be moving forward, or will you be putting some trees in the yards as well?
Um, yeah, usually, I mean, again, this is the, um, preliminary, we haven't done a, a full landscaping layout. I believe our, our tree, we checked and it met the requirements of the city code, whatever we are proposing.
Yes, it, yes, I remember reading that.
Okay.
Yeah, but, uh, because of the five-foot, that's, that's what, that's in the packet. I guess I was just asking, because one of the things I think is important is having that beautiful, that tree scape, and, um, it adds value. So that's one of the things I would like to see, at least some trees in the yard. I know.
I absolutely agree, you know, we're into, uh, uh, marketing sometimes with the, the reason, I think we had a, a variance because of, uh, the tree lawn and the driveways, it, it was impractical to fit, I mean, I think they had like three per lot. It was the original code, and I, that doesn't work, so, you know, we're agreeable to add more green strip. I mean, that only enhances the.
That'd be great.
Value of the property, so.
Where they fit, that'd be wonderful.
Yeah, yeah, and I think in our, over, if you want to direct staff to, on our landscaping plan to, you know, integrate, enhance landscaping plan where makes sense to, um, add.
And that was another, right, and that was another thing about landscaping from the detention pond, retention pond, however you call it, the same thing. I, um, also want to thank you for working so well, um, with the city and really thinking about what works. The beauty, um, looking for home, like owner occupied, like I appreciate all this, working with the fire department. I just wanted to say thank you. And, um, also, let's see here. Yeah, I think, I think I have all my questions that I need for tonight, so, uh, thank you. Any other questions for Mr. Cristo? Comments? All right, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Okay, so it looks like we are complete with the council portion. And now, Mr. Conover, do we take like a straw vote? How do we, how does that move forward?
Yeah, I think, um, typically what we'll do is. Yeah, I think typically what we'll do is do like a straw poll right now, so that way there's direction for what can be placed on the agenda for a first reading at the next meeting, which I think would be in January. So I'll defer to you on how you want to handle that. If you want to be, I guess, a formal roll call by Ms. Skank, that's fine, but otherwise, I think you guys can just go ahead and also offer up how you are situated.
That's good.
We can do roll call if you like. I did want to mention the concession of the traffic study. I would be in favor of that. How do you guys feel? We can just do a quick poll about that.
I'm against it. If it does not meet the criteria, then, once again, we're just, everybody will come down the pike, well, let's do this, let's do this, let's do this, and eight years down the road, we're still trying to get something built on Lincoln Side or Roosevelt.
Ms. Carter, how do you feel about the traffic study? Not necessary?
I do.
You do think, Mr. West?
I mean, criteria set for a purpose, and if it doesn't meet the criteria, then I don't see why we should do one.
Mr. Horn? Okay, so I guess that doesn't, that will not be a concession for council. And since I've already had the conversation about the trees, and I appreciate that, I think we can go ahead and go forward with the vote for the preliminary proposal here. So Ms. Skank, would you please call the roll?
So, what are we voting for right now?
Mr. Yoder, or Mr. Conover?
Yeah, so, don't call me that. So I would just say, I think what's before you now is, it's not a formal vote, there's no motion, there's no resolution or ordinance. This is essentially just a roll call to be able to inform staff, and candidly, Julie, and the legal department to identify how to fashion the first, or the ordinance that you'll have before you at the first January meeting, whether it's to approve the preliminary plan or deny it. So I think it'd even just be sufficient to say whether you support approval of the plan or denial of the plan. So it's not a formal yea or nay. I think just saying approve the preliminary plan or deny the preliminary plan would be sufficient. Unless someone else wants to do it somewhere, other way.
Yeah, that sounds good.
Sounds good. You're charging by the hour, so.
I'm ready to go home, so.
Okay, gotcha. Ms. Skank, would you please call?
I'm gonna get new shoes.
We don't need.
This is a straw vote.
Yeah, I think.
Yeah, yeah.
Call the roll, and it'll be approve or deny, is what the answer will be.
Deny.
I just want to make a quick statement. A no vote on this would open it up to be potentially developed into rentals. I'll make that clear to everybody, okay, because I'm gonna get my ass chewed out by everybody in the Highlands, so I'm voting yes, because we at least have an ounce of control. So, make that clear. And next bourbon night, I want to make it more clear.
Was that approve?
Yes.
Approve.
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 And then, one last time, this goes to the Planning Commission again, so it's still not done. This is not the final. Just want to make that clear again.
Yeah, for the final, what's the final plan?
And it comes back.
It'll come back to legislation to you all in January.
There's still more conversation to be had in January, yes. I just want to make that very clear, because people will be watching as well. All right, then. Well, thank you very much. This concludes the public hearing. The next order of business is citizen, or I'm sorry, we already did that, please forgive me. The next order of business is council comments. We will begin to my left with Councilmember Lally, filed by Councilmember Carter, and then to my right with Councilmember West, followed by Councilmember Horn, and I will speak last. Mr. Lally.
Okay, I'll be quick. My "Make a Middletown a Better Place" shout-out tonight goes to city staff on a few fronts. Congratulations to the fire department. You guys did one heck of a stop on the Kitty Hawk Fire. For those of you, you know, when you see flames coming through the roof, coming up on a commercial establishment, you think, oh, my God, and they made a great stop, because the next day, you could drive by Kitty Hawk Plaza and not even know it had an incident, which, so shout-out to their, shout-out to the town hall at the town ball last night. It was incredible, it was awesome, so to Ashley Combs and her team that put that together. Great job moving forward to make Middletown a better place. Scott, I think you probably had the salt trucks out for the first time, maybe a little bit, and so, you know, that's the time of year this is happening, so one last thing on that is we're coming into the holidays, Christmas Eve, Christmas Day, New Year's Eve, New Year's Day, and we'll have city staff who will, who will be out there working during those hours, police department, fire department, Public Works, and Public Health and others. So I just want to say a shout-out to city staff to thank you for working through the holidays like that. We appreciate it very much. That's all I got.
Thank you, Mr. Lally. Mrs. Carter?
I just want to wish the city of Middletown Merry Christmas and Happy New Year, and I'm good.
Thank you very much. Mr. West?
Yeah, just a few things tonight. This past week, I spoke to some of the leadership with Middletown Musical Arts Club, and I had heard of them, but I didn't really know too much about them, but they're a 501(c)(3) organization that fundraises. So that way, the band and orchestra, so on and so forth with, excuse me, with the high school. They can travel, they can do their Disney trips, things like that. So I'd like to, in the coming weeks, meet with them more, as well as some staff, to see if we can work together. With that said, also, last week, I met with the school superintendent and the treasurer. Both Deb and Randy took some time out to meet with me. I invited them on behalf of council to, you know, have a little bit of time to talk about what the schools are currently looking at. I know everybody's, you know, hearing about redistricting and things like that. Excuse me, I'm not sick, I'm just partially dying. It's nine o'clock. But I offered them some time with the upcoming strategic planning session in January. I think it's, I think it's a good idea to give them a little bit of a platform. They're going through some transitions, and I want to make sure that as a council and as a school board, we stay on the same page, as well as, I propose with them, once a quarter, or a couple times a year, whatever we see fit, that we have a, sort of a town hall style meeting between school board and city council. So, and they, they like that idea, so we'll work with staff to kind of get those established for calendar year '25. Only other thing, I'd like to congratulate Middletown Fire Department on the award tonight. Just last meeting, I spoke highly of them responding to a pretty serious accident that a friend of mine was in, and they were extremely fast, professional, knowledgeable, and so I was happy to see them get additional accolades tonight, because they truly are talented, and I'm really proud of city staff and previous councils and the voters supporting our firefighters and getting the new fire stations built. And so I'm looking forward to those ribbon cuttings coming up here shortly, so, thank you, Mayor.
Certainly, thank you, Mr. West. Mr. Horn?
First and foremost, I just want to, again, thank our first responders, especially our first fire department, and I'm also glad, when you see the Kitty Hawk Plaza on fire the way it was, I always worry about your men and women coming home, because that's all they really want to do. They want to do their jobs, and they want to come home, and I also appreciate the fire department, the police department, they kept traffic away, and also, I think other agencies responded. So it shows that we have a close relationship with, I think it was Monroe and Turtle Township came. But at times, we need, we always, we need to remember that there are folks that are out there that are willing to go into a burning building to save you, that are willing to, when you're having a heart attack, come and try to save your life, and work on you all the way to the hospital, or when you're in distress, that someone's going to come and protect you. And I think we need to take that into account more and more. At Middletown, we have great folks doing this from the bottom to the top, and I greatly want to just thank you again, Chief, for what you did at Kitty Hawk, and that everyone come home, came home safely. With the holidays coming up, I want to make sure I do this correctly, so I want to wish everyone a Happy Hanukkah, Merry Christmas, a Happy Kwanzaa, a very solemn Ramadan, and if you don't celebrate any of those, have a great day off. And also, just remember, you know, when you celebrate New Years, you don't want to have to see Middletown PD or the state troopers, because they'll housete if you want to party up too much. So just all everyone be safe and careful. Oh, and Chief, thank you so much. This is, I saw that, I was like, I want one, I got one. Everyone else did, but this is an awesome ornament, by the way. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Horn. Just wanted to, some quick updates. Very Merry Middletown continues with so many fun ways to celebrate the holidays this month, so please do visit downtownmiddletown.org now to discover what is possible for you and your friends and your family this holiday season. Join in tomorrow, Wednesday, December 18th, for a festive night of holiday performances by local choirs, including Diamond Jubilee Chorus, Cincinnati Sound Chorus, and special guests. The choir sing-off begins at 7:00 PM at Finkelmann Auditorium at Miami University Middletown, and to purchase tickets online, please visit holidayhoopla.org. A local band from the Cincinnati, Hamilton, Monroe, and Middletown area is raising money to record and release their debut album. The band is called Alex Salazar and the Urban Legend. The fundraiser is this Friday, December 20th, at the Butler Tech School of the Arts, beginning at 6:00 PM. There will be raffles, merchandise, concessions, and more. Admission is free and donations are appreciated. You can read more about the band on Butler Tech's site if you search Alex Salazar and the Urban Legend. And I have not heard their music and only had one conversation with Mr. Salazar, but he impressed me with his vibrancy, his professionalism, and his kindness, and I wish them luck. Again, thank you to all participating in the town mall survey and the town hall at the town mall meetings. Both the survey and the meetings were well represented, and I will ask Assistant City Manager Ms. Ashley Combs to expand upon this, and the next steps in the process of the town mall development during unfinished business. And again, as we were saying, the holidays, New Years is quickly approaching. I would ask everyone to be mindful of safety on New Year's Eve. New Year's Eve is one of, if not the busiest nights for both our EMS and police. So we want to wish all a happy and safe New Year, and ask that you consider making the safest choices you can during celebration time. And the Health Commissioner Jackie Phillips-Carter has provided a few things to be mindful of. Please be careful drinking too many spirits. Do not drink and drive. Call a friend or an Uber. Do not stay at parties too long. Watch what you say and do under the influence. Make sure you are hydrated, very important. Make sure you've been eating, and then spread out your intake of, if you're imbibing during the party throughout. And then, of course, as a reminder, the city of Middletown accepts applications for our boards and commissions throughout the year, so if there is something that you have an interest in and you wish to give back to your city in this way, please do submit your application, and to learn more, please visit our city's website at cityofmiddletown.org. And lastly, as always, there are many ways to get involved with your community and give back. Join a board or committee. Run for office. Apply for a job with the city. Volunteer at the hospital. Pick up trash in your neighborhood or park. Plant a garden in your yard. Smile at a neighbor. Find joy and satisfaction for a job well done in whatever work you do, or just have a positive and giving attitude. Find something that you can do regularly and give back. We are all connected, and we are all in this together. The care of our city is an adventure in which we all get to share. That is all for me tonight, and this concludes council comments. The next item on the agenda is the city manager report. Acting City Manager, Mr. Nathan Cahall, you have the floor.
Thank you, Mayor, Council. I think we actually got during public comment, got about a 93% preview, but when I asked Jeff Payne to come down, he's promised to state two slides, two slides, I think, to summarize.
Two slides, 10 minutes, right?
I was more, I was more a bidder for 45 seconds.
Please do make sure the microphone, that you speak right into it. Thank you.
Yes. Thank you for inviting us to present. Thank you for your time. And we did cover a lot, and it was not 90 minutes. Mutual respect. Let's all have mutual respect for each other. We wanted to share with you all the effect, the important effect that we have on not only the downtown community, but on Middletown in general. In fact, you know, my section of slides, we did cover a lot of those, we won't go through them. We're gonna go straight to our ask for you. But I just had a wonderful conversation with Ashley Yoder, who is the real estate agent for Butler County. She said, a year ago, everyone says, I want a house, but not in Middletown, anywhere but Middletown. She said, this year, that has changed. And she says, people are looking for homes in Middletown, and I truly, truly believe that the work that we do at Downtown Middletown, Inc., to make downtown a vital downtown, attracts people. If we are going to have new housing in Middletown, we're going to attract the kinds of folks who are looking for a vibrant downtown. A walkable community filled with events, filled with vibrant businesses and experiences. So just want to, again, reiterate the importance of the work that we do, and that should earn the respect of the city and all of you, as we do respect all of you as well. You know, we need to get behind the, get away from the Middletown of old, where everyone hates everyone else and mistrusts everyone else. So communication, collaboration, that's what we're asking for, and that's what I expect as a resident of Middletown. So thank you. I see the rest of my time to Jeff.
Thank you, Mary, and thank you for allowing us to come before you. If we can move quickly to slide number eight.
Matt? IT? There we go. Thank you.
Keep going. Keep going, keep going. Okay, right there. Stop. Thank you. All right, so we want to move quickly to our ask, and essentially, what it is, is we are, as a Main Street organization, Main Street America is an economic development organization, and there are roughly 2,000 Main Street organizations across the country. Here in Ohio, there are 24, and roughly 20 aspiring communities that are trying to reach and obtain the, that certification level. Since the inception of the organization, we have received $25,000 as an annual operating subsidy from the city of Middletown. In 2013, that was probably well above what we would normally have in the Main Street funding formula. The funding formula calls for diversity in your fund, in funding, and that is basically what I would call a three-legged stool. One leg is fundraising, which is what we do, Women's Wine and Chocolate Walk, all these events where you buy a ticket, and then you come, hops in the hangar, and have a great time. So that's one source of funding. The other source of funding is actual donations from our businesses and from major corporations. And then the third source of funding comes through the local government. These are fundamental requirements, and so, and they've not changed in the 45 years that Main Street America has existed. Next slide, please. Thank you. So our ask is basically these four things. One, we have not seen an inflation adjustment from the original $25,000 since, over these past nearly over 10 years. So what we're asking for is $35,095 as an inflation adjustment for 2025. In addition to that, we've asked, we're asking for a retroactive inflation adjustment of $9,206. We also are asking for $15,000 in printing and design services. We primarily perform the functions of the Visitors Bureau. If you have, you have the posters that were given to you, and the door tear sheets. We pay a consultant, a very small hourly wage, to put those together. That is a cost that primarily would be found with a Visitors Bureau, as opposed to our organization. We typically would collaborate with the Visitors Bureau and not necessarily take that function on. So that's a cost that we are asking, that we be able to be compensated for. And then the third is a city services, in-kind services. I've been here since 2017, and one of the, we would do events, we would close streets. You'd have thousands of people come, and then the city would bill us for closing the streets, when ultimately, the beneficiaries are the businesses, because there's increased taxes, you've got people spending more money and things like that, and we are now paying for that process. So we did some research. I checked with a number of our Main Street organizations, and typically, that is not something that they encounter. In fact, I reached out just this morning, because I, I knew that question might, that question might possibly come up, and some of the more stronger Main Street organizations, they told me that that's not the case. Typically, the city just covers that. told me that that's not the case. Typically, the city just covers that. Payneville, Delaware, Pickwa, Westerville, Worcester, Troy, and Sidney, these are all very nice communities. If you've ever visited their downtowns, you know that they're flourishing, and so that's part of that relationship between the city and the Main Street program. So if I could go to the next slide. So how did we calculate this inflation adjustment? As you can see, in 2013, it was $25,000. It's been that same way every year. We actually went to the Department of Labor sources and said, how can we make, how can we make this rational? And so that's what you see. The $9,206 is basically an accumulation over these last 12 years. Okay. Next slide, please. When we put these, this, the, these posters together, we're working with our downtown businesses, 95% of them, mom and pop, typically, one, maybe two persons working inside with the business. And so as we are, we do this five times a year. We generate a poster for the winter, so we all have one coming up for the winter. We have one in the spring. We do one in the summer. We do one in the fall, and then we do one with holiday season. And so that requires a lot of time engaging the businesses, because you have deadlines, you know, to print something. So we ask, so our consultant works with those businesses, sets a deadline, and then, of course, because she works very diligently, she'll then reach out, continue to, so we can get that, because we want to have a poster that really provides that information. And when people come and they see that poster, they go, hey, there's a lot of stuff going on. And people like stuff, a lot of things. That creates excitement. And we do the same thing, as Mary spoke previously, with our, with our Dora handouts. So that cost is essentially around $15,000. Next slide, please. Our, our Promotions Committee, we meet year-round, every Tuesday, and what we are doing is planning events throughout the entire year. So at one Promotions Committee meeting, we may be talking about four events. One, that is maybe a week out, another a month out, another two months out. So I just wanted to give you that sense of, that's just one of the, the main committees that we have. Next slide, please. If the question comes up, how did we calculate the cost for the in-kind donation for city services? We basically based it upon the various things that we have to do. Permit fees, we, we've used the show wagon, street closures, and things like that. So this is our budget base, our 2025 budget, based upon our calendar, and I think we provided to Nathan a copy of the actual calendar and how that lays out. So that pretty much explains our request from the standpoint of our budget request. And if you, we can go to the next slide, and I hope this is one that we can all agree upon as well. In 2017, one of the first things I did is went to Covington, Kentucky, to an event where this big check was handed to us for like $35,000, and it was to do the Manchester in the Snyder Building. The reason why we received the, the funding was because we're a 501(c)(3). This was actually money that belongs, I would say, kind of belongs to the city, because the city is working, was working at that time on putting the project together. And so we became the fiscal agent for it. The developer really did not move forward. We did do one $10,000 expenditure. At that time, they were doing a marketing study, and of course, marketing studies like design are concerns. So once-
I just wanted to say, I'm so sorry to interrupt. We did hit the 10-minute mark, so I just wanted to-
Okay.
Kind of like make sure we had-
Right.
Five more minutes total with questions.
Right. So once that ended, what we have done is actually asked, we're asking for you to allow us to reprogram that to use with the SORG. The SORG has some A&E services they need to have covered. This will allow them to move forward with their project. And the other thing that it does, it permits us to now to be able to go back and start doing, making applications for other projects and funding from Duke Energy. That's it.
All right. Thank you very much. And if you would stay, then we could have some questions from council, questions or comments.
I, I just have a couple of things. SORG, for sure. I mean, the SORG is just a great success story. It's a beautiful place, and I appreciate everybody who has ever volunteered there, donated, phenomenal place. Brings in a lot of people from out of town. The in-kind donations, I, I thought it was kind of funny. The city cuts you guys a check and then bills you. I mean, I mean, I'll donate, but give me a free ticket to something, right? I mean, whatever. So yeah, in-kind donations, for sure. As long as you think that projection, that 9,000 and change is going to be reasonable, it's not going to all of a sudden skyrocket up to, you know, 15K or something in additional hours.
We certainly don't anticipate that. What we try to do is we set our budget, and we set our schedule. And that way, that allows us to plan and help have the other committees do the work that they need to do as well.
Okay. The, the one thing I am going to pick apart is the, the retroactive. I, I wish I could, my, actually, my CEO's flying in tomorrow, and I'm going to meet with him. I would not ask him for retroactive, because I'd probably be packing up my stuff. So that's the one thing I'd be like, all right, we, we need to, and it's not necessarily, it was previous council. I don't want to step on their toes. They made the decision for their, you know, their donation amount. I, I wouldn't want to go back on that. I understand the, how you guys came up with inflation. You know, I, I guess for me, I look at it as a whole, you know, if the rest of council feels like we can, you know, make, make this contribution, that total amount number, the 69K, I guess I would be at 60K, right, if I did the math right? But, you know, I, I would like to open it up to, you know, there's a lot of organizations here in town. I, I think we, the most recent example is obviously, you know, the discussion of, you know, where is the city going to get involved fiscally when it comes to philanthropic endeavors, right? Not necessarily 501s, but, but philanthropy as a whole. We saw that with the band trip, right? You know, the 10K here, you know, donate, you know, things like that. You know, it takes a lot to make the city thrive and succeed. So I don't want to get too wordy, priority have, but I, I would be in support of this, except for the retroactive, if that makes sense. Nothing personal. It's just, I, I wouldn't want to step on previous negotiations slash previous council, so.
Any other comments or questions from council?
Nathan, where would we bum this out of?
We have a couple of options. I mean, obviously, we could take out the general fund. We could potentially take it out of Community Economic Developments, one of their line items. Could come out of the hotel motel tax fund, and I'm probably missing a couple off the top of my head, so.
Okay. So the one question I have, if you go back to the one slide that showed what your three ask, or the ask or that broke that up, is this, you know how we would do this in the past, where we, we gave DMI money at the beginning of the year, 15, 20,000, but then we also supported some of the events from the outside with the hotel bed and tax fund. So is this an addition to that, or this is it? So essentially, we've really then been doing the 9,000 and the, and the 15,000.
If we, if we go back a slide, two more slides back, we go to the history. It's never been to that amount. So here, here's the situation. We've had conversations with Paul, kind of ad hoc. You know, that 25,000 was always in place, but we've really struggled financially. You know, we've put a lot of our focus away from economic development downtown, revitalization, towards fundraising. So, you know, we've had these conversations where, can you help us out? Can you help us out? And, and that's not fair to Paul. It's not fair to Nathan, right, to keep just coming back with hat in hand. And so this year, for 2025, yes, nope, before, one more. This year for 2025.
Going in the wrong direction.
There you go.
Ah, yes, yes. So this year, we said, we are going to city council, and we are going to have our ask for 2025 all in one place, so you all can input, and you can decide how you want to proceed.
Okay.
We would, you know, provide a justification for every one of those line items.
We've done some of that 15,000.
Some of that. So if you go back one more, go back one more. There you go. So we, we absolutely are reflecting that. So if you see in 2023, right, we had $25,000 from the city funding. In addition to that, we had $5,000 in printing costs and in-kind donations from street closures. In 2024, that fell somewhat to, to $28,000, so an additional $3,000. And again, as you can see, with, especially with inflation being the way it has been the last few years, we've really felt the pinch, and we've really had some financial insecurities. We want that financial stability, so aren't constantly on a roadshow, hat in hand, asking for money. We can focus on economic development. We can sit down with Lisha and Nathan, you know, and Elizabeth and city council and say, hey, what, what can we as a volunteer organization with the freedoms that we have, you know, to raise money to, to, you know, as a nonprofit, to, to apply for these grants, how can we work together synergistically? That's the focus that I want as chair for the coming year as well. To be able to do that without the constant hat in hand to, you know, folks like Nathan. He's got better things to do than sit down with Jeff and I and say, hey, I can pay for this printing, I can pay for that street closure, right? He needs to know what his numbers are, too. And, and that's the impetus for us presenting to you today and having it all in one place, along with our financial history.
So, okay. And I saw that in, in the comments and everything about hat in hand and everything. But you're a nonprofit, and, and I have no problem with the city participating. It just seems like we're doing a big jump, and there's, there's reasons behind that. But isn't the purpose of your group is to get more donations? Well, and this, leave me a little rope here, because this is what I kept hearing. Well, if we didn't have to do that, we can do other things. It's like, well, wait a minute, that's what you have to do. And because I wrote down my notes, because I just kept hearing that of, well, if, if they didn't have to go get more donations or get more grants, they could go do other things. Like, well, no, it's, it's your corporation, you're incorporated, just like you came from Procter and Gamble. So-
I did. So thank you.
So to me, it, just like any business, that is part of the equation, just like marketing is part of the equation. Working with, with the government is part of the equation, but also going to the big fishes and saying, hey, look, you know, city council said, they'll give us this much, we're going to need this much from you, or we're going to need an increase. Let me give you an example. I donate to the Cincinnati Opera. And every year when I get a letter, they're, they're like, you donated $100 last year, but would you mind taking it up to 120 or 150? And you think, eh, you know, okay, because that's how, that's how they function, and they're a nonprofit also. So I'm just, I'm just trying to get information in my head with this on, I understand that you say, you say you don't want to have to do that at times, but I think it's also part of, you do this, but then you also trying to help SBEs, you're trying to make events, you're trying to do all these things. So to me, it's part of the, your corporation of, that's how you gain your funding. Is that accurate?
Absolutely. So in fact, this is the perfect slide for that. And thank you for that pitch for P&amp;G. I'm a P&amp;G retiree, so I absolutely understand return on investment. So as for one of the previous slides, that $25,000 generated 13-to-1 return on investment on economic development in downtown, between volunteer hours and people downtown. But if we look at this slide, and we, you know, didn't get a chance to look at it, if you look at fundraisers, right, in 2023, we raised $90,000. In 2024, slightly downturned, $82,000. But our projection in 2025 is $120,000. So we absolutely are lifting ourselves up, too. So we've actually instituted a new fundraiser in the fall, which is the Brose Bourbon and Beer Festival, so that we're hoping that becomes like a Women's Wine and Chocolate Walk, where we sell out at 900 tickets. So we are absolutely, and Jeff knows this, I've been a financial stickler this year, is, okay, what's under our control? How can we get more money? Donation, same thing. We are going to the big corporations, we're going to Combe Recycling, you know, thank them for their donation, Atrium Foundation, we will continue to do that as well. It's just, you know, some of these costs that we're taking on are costs that, because we are being very proactive, particularly, you know, in those guides. If you go to any city, and you go to a hotel, and you go to the, you know, the concierge, and you ask them, what, what can I do while I'm in town? They will give you a tear-off sheet with a map of what to do downtown. And that's what a city, you know, Visitors Bureau does, and they do that in Hamilton. We have stepped up to the plate, and that's why we have some additional costs that we're incurring as part of that, you know, economic development, drawing them in. But we absolutely are still going hat and hat, so to speak, to all the major donors, individual donors. I'm an individual donor as well. We're asking people to donate, to increase their donations. So, you know, this is not just asking you. One thing that Jeff had mentioned, too, is we're following Main Street America, which is, you know, National Preservation for Historic Trust, or whatever the name is. And it is that one-third, one-third model, and part of our accreditation is based on the city providing their fair share, which according to, you know, that those models is one-third. And so if you look to see, you know, based on our operating costs in 2023, that was 22%, 20% in 2024, and we're bringing it up to more, you know, in line with what we need for national accreditation. As part of this, and we've, you know, had a conversation with Nathan, is we need a letter from the city, from the city manager, to Heritage Ohio, saying that we can, will continue to fund, you know, Downtown Middletown, Inc. If we can get that national accreditation, so that we can have, you know, that as, as we're, you know, applying for grants. We can have that as our credential, you know, from P&amp;G Talk, that we are approved by a third-party organization, that we're doing the right things, that we're financially, you know, fiscally sound, and so on.
Okay. So one of your events is the, the Women's Wine and Chocolate Walk. So you spent X amount of dollars for advertising, marketing, and then selling of tickets. And this is just, this off the top of your head. And you've been doing that for how long?
We've been doing that for 11 years now.
11 years. Okay. So you should be good at it.
We're very good at it. We, we made $30,000 this year, the best year yet.
Okay. So of that 30K, you, how much did you spend in all the things that you had to do to make it happen? And then did that, did your number exceed? Or did you break even? Or did you lose? Or where, where were you at on that?
Good point. We're looking for cost savings. So we are always looking to see how we can be more efficient with, you know, the swag and so on. That $30,000, that's profit.
Okay.
That is, you know, that already takes into account, you know, the glasses that you have to buy at the Women's Wine Chocolate Walk, the wine, the chocolate, and everything.
Okay.
And that is, you know, we have many major sponsors for that event, and so on.
So you're showing you're, you're in the black on-
Yeah.
On that event.
We are. We're in the black.
It's just an important question to ask, because we're, we're trying to also say, okay, this is a corporation. Is it a good business, is it a good business? Does it have a good business model? What's going on? Because there are some concerns. You know, when you go downtown, and I've spoken to owners, not the manager or the person who's at the counter, and I'd just ask them. I said, are you a member of DMI, or are you aware? And most of them say they're aware. And I went on your website, and it just needs a little updating, because there's some places that are no longer in business. And, and to me, when you say we're active and we're doing these things, and just take this as just a observation, to me, now, some businesses, they just go. You know, and, and like you said, you're doing quarterly updates, and then also a major holiday update. For us to say, okay, there you go, and here's your funds for 2025, we have an expectation, too, of, and I'm not picking on anyone, I'm just saying it was an observation. I'm sure your IT person's like, oh, okay, that's why, this is not a business, and it's not a business. Because unfortunately, when we, when I drive downtown, I call it the summer businesses. Because unfortunately, when we, when I drive downtown, I call it the summer businesses. And for some reason, in January and February, you'll go down Central, and it's a, not, not, it's not the wine or the wine or the distilleries, it's the other businesses. You suddenly see for lease, which no one really wants to see when you're driving downtown. But I, I think what happens is, they had a six-month business model, and didn't take into account, people are not going to come down, you know, during January and February for that. And I'm not blaming you at all at that. I'm just saying, you know.
So, you know, one of the things that we have from a work plan point of view, and that, and then, again, it's, it's part of a, how we operate as a Main Street America organization. For every one of our committees, we have work plans that are associated with that. And that's, we also have to turn that in, along with our budget for 2025, for the national accreditation. And one of our business plan is, is a business acumen. So as people come in, you know, as new businesses come in with the, with the business model, that is perhaps isn't as strong as it could be, we can educate them about, you know, like reading a lease, for example, you know, making a business plan. And we're also partnering First Financial Bank that offers microloans, $10,000 microloans. But you have to provide a business plan to be eligible and accepted for a microloan. So these are the sorts of things that, that we want to focus on, you know, in the coming years. You know, as, as our events become a little bit more turnkey, we can turn over, you know, a lot of the hands-on planning to a, an event planner, and still make a $30,000 profit. We want to be able to, to sit down with First Financial and say, hey, how can we apply the microloan program? Or we also have 20, $40,000 in grants that we have for second-story restoration for residential lots. And so we are, we will have four $10,000 matching loans that we will advertise through DMI. So, you know, lots of, of ways, you know, using that four-point model of design promotions, murals, working with Art Central Foundation, to have more murals up. So I call it a little bit like make it till you fake it. So, you know, so how can you make your downtown more inviting? And public art is such a wonderful way of doing that. It makes people feel safer, more engaged, makes the community more vibrant. On a smaller scale, we actually paid Mr. Combs $500, DMI did, to go around to those places that have vacant storefronts. As you can see with many of those, now they have winter scenes on there, so that, you know, as people are strolling along, they're not just looking at, you know, boarded up and papered over windows. There's actually, you know, something fun and engaging for them to kind of see as they walk by.
I want to give you a compliment. I appreciate, especially with Bouvet, the Mormons. To me, they're like the, the founding or keystone of downtown. Because I love the City Center Mall. I used to go to that store, and I would get my poppin' popcorn, and there was a fountain right there, and I would sit there. So when they took it over, and they've been there the whole time, and they developed it, and the fact that you guys got them a grant, I greatly appreciate that. And that's, that's why I, I do see the benefit. But it's also also about, you know, okay, what's, what funding is fair, and what funding is necessary, and what, what, how can we continue this, this working relationship, you know, with the city, and also watch your, your relationships grow with more SBEs. I think folks, our SBDC person, he actually talks people out of starting businesses, because they don't understand the first five years are going to be very challenging. So it's good to also have a, folks that have worked in a very large corporation, a billion-dollar corporation, be able to say, look, you can reach these goals, but it's not going to be just, here's $10,000 and have fun, and we'll see you, you know, closed in 24 months. So, but I just wanted to give you that compliment. I greatly appreciate when you help folks who are actually here, they're not going anywhere, and they, they are actually, you help them even grow their business even more.
Thank you.
And we are, we've gone way over time. I just wanted to say, if there are no more questions for them specifically, I'd like to ask you to sit down, and then we can just kind of discuss what we'd like to do further. Any other questions for them specifically? All right. Thank you very much for your presentation. Does anybody have anything to say before I, any questions or comments? Okay. One of the things that I'm, we were talking about as far as nonprofit monies from the city, it was a budget for 2025 at about $100,000. Is that correct, Mr. Cahall?
Yeah, I just threw that out as something that, if, that'd probably be a, a high mark, just based on what we have budgeted right now. But you folks control the purse strings. You can.
Well, we've done the budget. That's why I ask, because.
Yeah.
That's what we're looking at really for 2025. And so the conversation for me is, 2025 is kind of set. 2026, we could definitely look more. But what I'm hearing is, when we had a meeting, I had a meeting with Mr. Cahall and Jeff Payne and Mary Johnson, and it looked like the, the bare minimum, because in-kind is not actually, I don't think it was given to them. It's like, that's the amount they're looking for. I don't think we write a check for that. My understanding was, the, the base of what they needed was $50,000. So that was, again, speaking to Mr. West's contribution about the retroactive. So would we deduct that retroactive, we deduct the in-kind money, because we're not actually writing a check for that. That would leave us with $50,000. Now, if we're looking at the $100,000 for the year for 2025, again, 2026 would be a different conversation. But then, that's $50,000 to DMI. We do have a $25,000 commitment to Holiday Hoopla in 2025 as well. So that's $75,000 right there. I'd like to have some wiggle room with other entities as well, like we mentioned earlier. What are the thoughts about that? Like $50,000 plus the SORG? Can we have a conversation?
So you, this $100,000, what's this?
I, when we, Mr. Cahall, when we were talking about how much do we give to people, to nonprofits, to people, like for donations and things like that, the number was put out about $100,000 on the high end for 2025.
I haven't heard any discussion about that, so I.
And that was just, what, what would be in the ballpark?
Confused what that even is.
There was a discussion about, let's, let's looking at guidelines.
Discussion with who?
We wanted to have a discussion, like, that's one of the things we want to talk about, strategic planning.
We already had the.
No, no, I, we wanted to. Yeah.
I was lost. I don't, I don't remember having that discussion.
That's one of the things we want to talk about, strategic planning as well, that I'd like to talk about at least.
I think that's a discussion for another night. I don't see it as a discussion tonight.
So.
Have to give it some thought.
But how does that sound to council? Would the $50,000 work? Do you want to stick with the $60,000? Because, again, I would like to have some money for other organizations as well for 2025.
Even though I'm talking. Yes, I mean, if, if, now, we're, we're going to transfer that 17 money to the SORG.
That's separate.
Yes.
Okay.
Two separate.
Yeah. Okay. I like the SORG. So.
The SORG, yes.
Uh, so, okay. I know it's getting late. How much do we donate to the SORG every year? Or do we?
We don't.
We don't.
Okay, I thought we did. Okay, so I'm.
Arpa money.
We gave them about $165,000 in Arpa funds.
So annually.
Two years ago.
Annually, we do not give anything to the SORG?
We haven't, no.
Okay. I, again, I, I, that's why I'm asking the question. So, can we go back to the, the one chart that has the four things broke down, with the 16, 9, thank you, stop. There you go. Good. Okay. So what you're saying is 50 for that, and that's it?
I think so, because in-kind, again, we don't really write a check for that. It's as they're, they're saying that's kind of what the city is going to be donating. So you can kind of subtract that $10,000 already. We're at $60,000. And then if we subtract the retroactive, we'd be at $50,000.
Okay.
And they, they actually agree. They said that was a bare, kind of like a bare minimum that would work for them.
Right. Because the 35 is good for, that, that's inflation, because we always just used to give them 25, 25, 25. I got that. I'm okay with the 50.
Others? Other comments? 50, 60?
You want a motion, or?
I don't think we need a motion, just kind of a consensus.
No, this, this was something that I've, I've watched for years, be a landmine to step on from time to time. So I just wanted to ask you tonight to get a little bit of consensus, and we can take it from there.
I'm fine with the $50,000.
All right, 50 in SORG. Mrs. Carter?
Then I'm fine with the SORG thing also.
I'm good with 60.
Okay. Then, you're also good with 60, Mr. Lolly? Is that what you said? I'm sorry, I didn't hear you.
I, I'm fine with the 60.
Okay, others? Because that would put us at 60, then that puts us at 85 with Holiday Hoopla. So we'd have 15 for other ventures.
You said you need, you need 25 for Holiday Hoopla. They keep asking for more.
Well, she added it on the 60.
I added it on.
It would be at 85.
Okay.
Yeah.
Does that make sense?
Are we doing 50 or 60?
That's what I'm asking for the consensus.
I'm at 50.
Okay. So, Mr. West?
I mean, I'm, I'm good at 50.
Okay. Let's do 50 for this year. And for 2026, we can look at a new number and another number also for, in, in donations for nonprofits. I think that's.
Yeah. And really, I think staff has the, the ability to, if you see something that we can help, like we have in the past in the Visitors Bureau, or not the Visitors Bureau, but the hotel and bed tax, we certainly have.
Yeah.
Does it work? Okay. Excellent. Um, one moment, please. Can you?
Yeah.
The conversation is that they would, they're requesting the payment in January for operational reasons, and Mr. Cahall has nodded yes.
Sam, get the checkbook out.
Okay.
Step on it.
Thank you. And, Mr. Cahall, does that conclude the DMI presentation?
Yes, ma'am.
All right. Thank you very much. Please, continue.
Is this something we could table to?
Yes, I was actually gonna say.
Okay, great.
Mr. Horn asked for this at the last meeting of the year.
Table, great.
Yes.
Thank you. We will table.
Drop the hook, Scott.
Sorry, sorry, Scott.
Hey, Scott, now that it's 9:30, you can leave.
All right. All right. So we will table the Public Works and Utilities Department presentation, and we will move on to the consent agenda. While the consent agenda is generally for consensus items, do any council members wish to remove anything from the consent agenda this evening and move it to the motion agenda?
No.
No?
No.
Hearing none, we will continue. Mrs. Skank, would you please present the consent agenda?
For your consideration this evening, we have to receive and file the following Boarding Commission minutes. The Board of Zoning Appeals from July 3rd and November 6th, 2024. The Historic Commission from August 15th and October 10th, 2024. The Civil Service Commission of September 19th and October 17th, 2024. And the Library Board from September 18th and October 16th, 2024. To confirm the conditional appointment of Jarrett Ferris to the position of Maintenance Worker in the Department of Public Works and Utilities Water Maintenance Division. To confirm the conditional appointment of Hannah Wilson to the position of Corrections Officer in the Department of Public Safety Division of Police. To receive and file OSF Office for Leila Etter and Shaylon Hope Arnett. And approve the final plat for Heritage Landing Section 2.
Is there a motion to approve the consent agenda?
Motion.
Is there a second?
Second.
It has been properly moved and seconded to accept the consent agenda, and we will proceed to vote. Mrs. Skank, please call the roll.
Mr. West?
Yes.
Mr. Horn?
Yes.
Mayor Slampa?
Yes.
Mrs. Carter?
Yes.
Mr. Lolly?
Yes.
Yes, as have it, the motion passes. The consent agenda is approved. The next item is the motion agenda. We have six items this evening. Mrs. Skank, please present item A on the motion agenda.
To authorize the purchase of liquid chlorine sodium hyperchloride 15% to 18% concentration from JCI Jones Chemicals Incorporated of Beech Grove, Indiana, in the amount of $1.95 per gallon for use at the water treatment plant.
Oh, thank you. And do I have a motion to approve item A to authorize the purchase of liquid chlorine?
Motion.
Is there a second?
Second.
Having been properly moved and seconded, is there any discussion? Hearing none, we will proceed to vote. Mrs. Skank, please call the roll.
Mr. Horn?
Yes.
Mayor Slampa?
Yes.
Mr. Lolly?
Yes.
Mrs. Carter?
Yes.
Mr. West?
Yes.
The motion passes, and, thank you. Mrs. Skank, item B, please.
To authorize the acting city manager to enter into a contract with Adalita Incorporated to proceed with the 2025 urban paving project contract repairs along Roosevelt Boulevard, State Route 122, between University and Roosevelt Overpass and Jackson Lane, in a not-to-exceed amount of $125,560.18.
Is, do we have a motion to approve item B to authorize the acting city manager enter into a contract?
Motion.
Is there a second?
Second.
It has been properly moved and seconded. Is there any further discussion? Hearing none, we will proceed to vote. Mrs. Skank, please call the roll.
Mayor Slampa?
Yes.
Mr. Lolly?
Yes.
Mrs. Carter?
Yes.
Mr. West?
Yes.
Mr. Horn?
Yes.
Yes, as have it, the motion passes. Mrs. Skank, please present item C.
To accept a grant in the amount of $5,000 from the Pat Landy Access Fund to be used for potential site development expenses for a community grocer and health clinic facility at the Vale site.
Do we have a motion to approve item C to accept the grant?
Motion.
Is there a second?
Second.
It has been properly moved and seconded. Is there any discussion? Hearing none, we will proceed to vote. Mrs. Skank, please call the roll.
Mr. Lolly?
Yes.
Mrs. Carter?
Yes.
Mr. West?
Yes.
Mr. Horn?
Yes.
Mayor Slampa?
Yes. The yeses have it, the motion passes. Mrs. Skank, please present item D on the motion agenda.
To authorize the acting city manager to enter into a grant agreement with the Ohio Department of Transportation to install multiple EV charging systems at four locations in Middletown. The city will be reimbursed by ODOT for 100% of the eligible costs of this project.
Thank you. Do we have a motion to approve item D to authorize the acting city manager to enter into a grant agreement?
Motion.
Is there a second?
Second.
It has been properly moved and seconded. Is there any discussion? Hearing none, we will proceed to vote. Mrs. Skank, please call the roll.
Mrs. Carter?
Yes.
Mr. West?
Yes.
Mr. Horn?
Yes.
Mayor Slampa?
Yes.
Mr. Lolly?
Yes.
The yeses have it, the motion passes. Mrs. Skank, please present item E.
To authorize a contract with Optum Insurance for the city's stop-loss health insurance coverage in 2025 at an estimated cost of $1,144,777.
Do we have a motion to approve item E to authorize the contract?
Motion.
Is there a second?
Second.
It has been properly moved and seconded. Is there any discussion? Seeing none, we will proceed to vote. Mrs. Skank, please call the roll.
Mr. West?
Yes.
Mr. Horn?
Yes.
Mayor Slampa?
Yes.
Mrs. Carter?
Yes.
Mr. Lolly?
Yes.
Yes, as have it, the motion passes. Mrs. Skank, please present the last item on the motion agenda.
To authorize the sale of the properties located at 1105 Woodside Boulevard and 1721 Sheffield Street, parcel ID Q6521034000036 and Q6542070000001 to Dicky Brandon for $1,500 each, plus closing costs.
Thank you. Do we have a motion to authorize the sale of the properties?
Motion.
Is there a second?
Second.
It has been properly moved and seconded. Is there any discussion? Hearing none, we will proceed to vote. Mrs. Skank, please call the roll.
Mr. Horn?
Yes.
Mayor Slampa?
Yes.
Mr. Lolly?
Yes.
Mrs. Carter?
Yes.
Mr. West?
Yes.
Yes, as have it, the motion passes. This concludes our motion agenda. The next item on the agenda tonight is legislation. Oh, sir. Oh, yes, sir. We will take a seven-minute break. Thank you. We'll return at 9:42. Thank you.
Got to slow down, man.
Gotta slow down, man. Slow down.
Yes, okay, great. Thank you. Mr. Conover, the legislation, please.
Great. Um, the first item tonight is ordinance number O-2024-98, an ordinance establishing a procedure for and authorizing purchases of asphalt by the city purchasing agent in 2025 and declaring an emergency.
Thank you. Mr. Cahal, do you have anything to add?
Uh, no, Your Honor, nothing to add.
Thank you. Is there a motion to approve the ordinance?
Motion.
Is there a second? It has been properly moved and seconded. Is there any discussion? Seeing none, we will proceed to vote. Mrs. Skank, please call the roll.
Mayor Slamka?
Yes.
Mr. Lally?
Yes.
Mrs. Carter? Mr. West?
Yes.
Mr. Horn?
Yes.
Yes, as have it, the legislation passes. Mr. Conover, the next item, please.
Item two tonight is ordinance number O-2024-101, an ordinance authorizing additional funds for the contract with Polydine Incorporated for the purchase of polymer for use at the water reclamation facility and declaring an emergency.
Thank you. Mr. Cahal, the staff report, please.
Uh, nothing new to, uh, nothing new to add since last time.
Thank you. Is there a motion to approve the ordinance?
Motion.
Is there a second?
Second.
It has been properly moved and seconded. Is there any discussion? Seeing none, we will proceed to vote. Mrs. Skank, please call the roll.
Mr. Lally?
Yes.
Mrs. Carter?
Yes.
Mr. West?
Yes.
Mr. Horn?
Yes.
Mayor Slamka?
Yes. The yeses have it, and the legislation passes. Mr. Conover, the next item, please.
Next is resolution number R-2024-34, a resolution to make adjustments to appropriations for current expenses and other expenditures of the City of Middletown, Counties of Butler and Warren, State of Ohio, for the period ending December 31, 2024, and declaring an emergency. This is the American Rescue Plan Act of 2021 Fund.
Thank you. Mr. Cahal, the staff report, please.
Uh, yes, mayor members of council, before you is a, what we hope to be a last and final cleanup of all of our ARPA dollars. This is one where we were hoping to be able to avoid, uh, some of the, some of this last transactional need, but, uh, we did have a few projects, as you'll see in the staff report, mostly related to our ARPA infusion and, and, uh, neighborhood revitalization grants. We had some projects that either didn't go forward, um, or came in lower than what the grant award was, and so we need to revenue replace those dollars. Also, Mr. Tadish came in eighty-eight cents under budget on a sewer project, so, yes.
All right, thank you.
Don't worry, it's going straight to legal.
Is there a motion to approve the resolution?
Motion.
Thank you. Is there a second?
Second.
It has been properly moved and seconded. Is there any discussion? Hearing none, we will proceed to vote. Mrs. Skank, please call the roll.
Mrs. Carter?
Yes.
Mr. West?
Yes.
Mr. Horn?
Yes.
Mayor Slamka?
Yes.
Mr. Lally?
Yes.
Yes, as have it, and the legislation passes. Mr. Conover, the next item, please.
Next is resolution number R-2024-35, a resolution authorizing transfers from the Central Avenue Sidewalk, Curb and Gutter Fund, 2018 Sidewalk, Curb and Gutter Fund, 2019 Sideway, Sidewalk, Curb and Gutter Fund, 2020 Sidewalk, Curb and Gutter Fund, 2021 Sidewalk, Curb and Gutter Fund, 2022 Sidewalk and Curb, Sidewalk, Curb and Gutter Fund, and 2023 Sidewalk, Curb and Gutter Fund to the General Fund for repayment of prior year advances and declaring an emergency.
Thank you. Mr. Cahal, the staff report, please.
Uh, as council knows, annually, we do some work by special assessment here in the city, uh, for sidewalk, curb, and gutter. And typically, um, instead of borrowing money, uh, for those projects, uh, which certain communities, some communities do, um, we advance funds for, or dollars from the General Fund to those particular assessment funds to cover the present year construction. And then as folks pay their property taxes and those assessments, those revenues come back to those individual assessment funds for then, them, them to be transferred back to the General Fund to reimburse it. So essentially, the General Fund has provided an interest-free loan to these various series of special assessment funds. Uh, this is an annual, uh, year-end transfer, uh, that the city typically does. And so, as you can see here, there are folks that are, maybe had an assessment in 2022. They're starting to pay, um, you know, their five-year assessment, or however long the assessment is. As those funds are coming in, then they go back to the General Fund.
Thank you, Mr. Cahal. Is there a motion to approve the resolution?
Motion.
Is there a second?
Second.
It has been properly moved and seconded. Is there any discussion? Hearing none, we will proceed to vote. Uh, Mrs. Skank, please call the roll.
Mr. West?
Yes.
Mr. Horn?
Yes.
Mayor Slamka?
Yes.
Mrs. Carter? Mr. Lally?
Yes.
Yes, as have it, the legislation passes. Mr. Conover, the next item, please.
Item five tonight is resolution number R-2024-36, a resolution to make adjustments to appropriations for current expenses and other expenditures of the City of Middletown, Counties of Butler and Warren, State of Ohio, for the period ending December 31, 2024, and declaring an emergency. This is a year-end for various funds.
Thank you. Mr. Cahal, the staff report, please.
Uh, yes, uh, mayor members of council, this is the last and final cleanup, uh, resolution for the 2024 budget. Um, as highlighted by the, uh, finance director, um, there is no net cost or net, uh, net change to the general fund's overall standing. Um, although you will see that there is a water fund, uh, adjustment, uh, that's necessary before year-end closeout.
Thank you. Is there a motion to approve the resolution?
Motion.
Is there a second?
Second.
It has been properly moved and seconded. Is there any discussion? Hearing none, we will proceed to vote. Mrs. Skank, please call the roll.
Mr. Horn?
Yes.
Mayor Slamka?
Yes.
Mr. Lally?
Yes.
Mrs. Carter?
Yes.
Mr. West?
Yes.
Yes, as have it, the legislation passes. Mr. Conover, the next item, please.
Item six is ordinance number O-2024-102, an ordinance establishing a procedure for and authorizing a contract with Central Square Technologies LLC for software for the Public Safety Department and declaring an emergency. There's no action requested until January 7, 2025.
Thank you. Mr. Cahal, the staff report, please.
Uh, before you, as a first reading of an ordinance that would authorize the city to enter into a contract, uh, with Central Square Technologies, uh, to start the process of replacing our dispatch and record management system, um, for public safety, or at least predominantly for the police portion of public safety. Uh, this is a, uh, project that was budgeted for, uh, in the 2025 budget that was adopted. And, um, the request is, as you'll see, is to, um, for you folks to consider passage, uh, on an emergency basis at the next meeting, um, which would allow us to start the project here in early, uh, 2025, maybe as, maybe even before the end of January, because this is probably, at a minimum, a twelve-month project, and it could be fifteen months before full implementation. Not only because changing software of any size and magnitude is a challenge at times also, but also this is a, uh, software system that, uh, lives depend on, people depend on, and it has to be done right, and it has to be one hundred percent perfect day one of launch.
Thank you. As this is a second reading emergency, there is no action to take this, at, at this time. However, is there any discussion from council at this time? Hearing none, we will proceed. Mr. Conover, the last legislative item, please.
Great. Um, the last item tonight is resolution number R-2024-37, a resolution authorizing the filing of applications for state fiscal year 2026 with the Ohio Department of Transportation for grants under the Ohio Public Transportation Grant Program. This is a first reading.
Thank you. Mr. Cahal, the staff report, please.
Uh, yes, uh, annually, the Ohio Department of, uh, Transportation requires us to pass authorizing legislation, uh, that preemptively authorizes the city to apply for grant funding for our transit operations that ODOT, uh, uh, manages. And so this is just the annual blanket resolution, uh, that, uh, is a check-the-box type of thing, so that we can submit our grant paperwork here shortly.
Thank you. As this is a first reading, there is no action to be taken at this time. However, is there any discussion from council? Hearing none, um, that concludes the legislation for the evening. The next item on the agenda is unfinished business. Do any council members have anything they would like to bring up under unfinished business?
Just the date for the, the, uh...
Do you want to speak to it?
Strategic plan, just the date for the strategic plan.
So, um, last time it was talked about, like, what's, what are some good dates, some good Saturdays in January for the strategic plan? Looks like we could look at the 11th, the 18th, or the 25th. Are there any preferences? Gotcha. Um, the one thing I thought of, and it does not affect staff as I asked them, I thought maybe they wouldn't want to have the meeting on the 18th, as we have a council meeting that Tuesday, just for all the workload. Um, but they said they'd be fine either way. Uh, does anybody have any? I would prefer probably the 18th or the 25th, if I, if I had to choose, just for work and timing.
The 18th is MLK weekend. I don't know if that impacts anything. It might, it might not, but... I, I believe the city would be closed on the Monday, right?
That's true.
So, maybe the 25th?
25th?
25th is fine with me.
That work with Ms., you, Mrs. Carter?
Yeah.
Mr. Horn? Okay, the strategic plan would be planned session on the 25th?
So, can we suggest a, um, facilitator?
Oh, suggest a facilitator for the strategic planning session? Um, who did we have do it this year?
The city manager is norm, the city manager is normally the facilitator of that, because staff brings a lot of, a lot of the information and what, what, uh, staff has, is working on, looking forward, and what's important in all of the departments. An outside facilitator would probably be very confused in what we're planning to do on a staff council basis for the upcoming year.
But how do we know if we've never had one? How do we know that, uh, an outside facilitator can't help us reach?
I, there's never been a purpose for it. What would a, an outside facilitator, what would they bring to the table that would help us do strategic planning for city operations?
What do you see, Mrs. Carter? The benefit?
I, I don't...
Would please be into the mic.
The strategic planning that I attended last year, I didn't see.
Oh, the microphone is not on?
I didn't, I haven't seen a lot of progress. I'm just saying, I would think someone else could help with the strategic planning.
Oh, so you're saying you'd like s, okay, so there has been, there also been, it sounds like you want to have, like, a different way of doing strategic planning? We've been talking about that kind of, just like, a new way. Maybe, Mr. West, you might want to speak a little bit to the new ideas for strategic planning meeting?
Yeah, so, I mean, there's, uh, yeah, I, I understand where you're coming from. We didn't even make it through the entire binder in January. So my, sort of my intent, or my idea was, if we sort of scaled it back, um, you know, obviously, each department, what's, what's important, what's going on, what are the pressing issues, um, or big projects, right? Uh, obviously carve out a little bit of time for the schools. But additionally, um, have some time where we sort of treat it more like a think tank or an innovation session to where we ha, we can put some ideas out there, okay? Part, part of it is, there's a lot of people in town that are looking, you know, they, sure, they want to hear the updates and things like that, but they also want to, they never get a chance to hear what council's thinking. You know, like, for example, like, what is, you know, what's, what's Jennifer Carter thinking for this year? What are her ideas? What, 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 what types of things is, would she like to, you know, present, bring to the table? Um, those types of things, as well as if there, and again, I know it's just one day, but if there are any organizations outside of the schools and things like that that have a shared, you know, collaborative interest, whether it be an organization like DMI or something like that, they could, they could come as well and say, hey, here's what we have planned for this year. You know, it's one thing to kind of go through and get the updates, but if you really want it to be a strategic planning session, we need to hear from people and, and organizations, as well as individual council members to understand, okay, what, what, what are we planning? What's strategic about this? So, uh, that's kind of my, I don't know if that falls in line with what you were thinking, Jennifer, but...
Uh, there was also kind of going with what you were saying. There was also the, the idea that was presented about the, taking like a survey of like what people are interested in. I think Mrs. Combs would, Ms. Combs would be able to speak with that, um, perhaps as well. But the idea of having the survey, um, to see what kinds of things that Mr. Mr. West presented, like the, the populace would like to see and have council even talk about. So it would give us some direction as far as talking points as well. Does that sort of speak to what you're talking about?
Yes.
Yes?
Just something, um, it, I think it would be beneficial to us to, to, for someone to come in and look at this city with different eyes. We have the same eyes going on right now, and we see everything the same. Nothing is, we, we talk about moving forward, but we move forward with the sameness.
Yeah, I, I fully understand what you're saying, and I agree, I agree with you. And I think maybe we're talking about two separate things here. I, I think what we've traditionally done in January of every year is staff has presented some things to council and said, council, in these areas, what are your priorities? And that gets staff moving to do some things in 2025. I think more of what I see, and I agree with you, in having a facilitator, because we have used those in the cities in the past, have been more of, of, uh, master planning and comprehensive planning, not at the level of the thing McBride Daniels did, but more master planning of, of actually what council member Horn was talking about earlier in the fall, about planning out two years down the road, three years down the road, four years down the road. I fully agree with you in, in that, in that aspect, in that realm, and maybe with the survey after the first of the year. I just, traditionally, the thing we've had in the first couple of Saturdays is to get direction, council to give staff direction that these are your priorities working through twenty, early 2025, or whatever year it was. So that's, that's, I agree with you. And, and that's where a facilitator has worked for the city in the past. We, we did it for addressing the opioid problem. We, we did it for, oh, a couple other housing issues. I believe Doug did, brought in a facilitator, homeless one time. Doug Atkins brought in a facilitator. So I, I agree with you there. I just think maybe we're talking about two separate things.
No, I'm talking about strategic planning, that she would help.
I understand that, I get that, but there's a difference here of immediate, one year versus strategic planning out one year, two years out, three years out. That takes several meetings.
And that was something I wanted to also talk about, strategic planning, that idea.
Yeah.
That idea, two, two years out, maybe something like that, three years out. Does that speak to what you wanted to speak to, Mrs. Carter?
I think we should have that. I agree with you.
All right, that'll be one of the things that we will talk about then. Anything else for unfinished business by anyone? No? So I wanted to, I did want to ask, um, Ms. Combs to kind of speak to that survey that you were planning for the, um, the strategic planning session.
So we'd had a conversation about putting out a survey just to see what the public would be interested in hearing about at our strategic planning session coming up on, it sounds like Saturday, January 25th. Um, just in giving some examples, whether that be parks, public safety, just trying to get some ideas out there, just a one, two-question survey that we could run for, you know, the next month. If that would be something that council is interested in, be happy to put that out tomorrow.
Yeah, it could be something... Yeah, it could be something as simple as you could have, say, five choices, right? Public safety, community revitalization, economic development, you know, all the, all the, all the points that make a thriving city. And you could even simplify it to have residents rank their priorities.
Yeah, we could put the hot topic items on, to your point.
Yeah, and then, you know, depending on what you use for the survey, you could break it up by neighborhood or area, so you could start to see like, hey, these certain parts of town, or these communities are prioritizing public safety more than economic development. It could start to paint a map. I could be completely wrong, but it, it kind of gives context, because, you know, Middletown's pretty, pretty diverse, and so what matters in one community may not be a high priority in another community. So it, it could just give us a little bit perspective.
Just to make sure that we're on the same page, I can put that together, I can get that to council tomorrow, and you could give me feedback individually by Friday, and we could aim to get that out Monday.
That sounds, that sounds good.
How would that sound?
I mean, does that sound?
Just to make sure that we're all the same page, just to capture all of the points.
I think it's like a precursor to a conversation for 2026 as well, as far as like a longer, like what would you like to see in the next two years, three years, whatever, but yeah, I think this is a good start. Microphone?
Let me get one of those little headsets. I, I think us inviting like DMI and Middletown Connect and everyone who's involved with our city that says that they're helping our city, I think we should give them, and don't give a, I mean, you know, I know I talk too much tonight, but give them a 10 minute and just say, this is our plan for 2025, this is our plan for the next five years, so we can hear what's going on, because I have no idea. And I know that's kind of stretching the meeting out on that Saturday, but if we're going to get interactive with folks, then I want to know what's going on with folks we're giving money to. So if we can invite those folks, just tell them, you know, your presentation is, and we've put a little clock in, and you can just hit the gavel, your time's up. But maybe we start doing that, just so we get them involved. So then we know what their plan is, and then if we can assist, or if they're like, no, we're good, we're just telling you this is what we're doing, then I think we should do it, because we didn't do it last year, so.
I think that's a great idea, council. You like that idea? We can also think about that. Okay, all right. Thank you, Mrs. Combs. Also, briefly, if you'd also like to, Ms. Combs, you did such a great job, you and the rest of staff, on the town hall, the town mall, the survey itself. I'd love to hear just like where we landed with the survey, like how many, and then what the next steps are.
Yeah, so with the town mall survey, online, we had 634 survey responses, and paper copies, we had 21 of those. The town hall at town mall, we had approximately 80 people in attendance, we had three news outlets there, Cincinnati Inquirer, Journal News, and Channel 9, which did a nice little short interview that was on TV last night. There were various news stories that were released beforehand, I think city staff, Clayton, everyone did a great job getting the word out, getting the surveys out. Thank you to all of city council for doing so, also putting yard signs out. A lot of staff and people are involved in that. I also want to give a shout out to the community and economic development staff that were in attendance that helped talk to the residents as well as city council people that were there as well. It was great to see the community's support by the project and taking the survey and attending. The majority of the people are looking forward to seeing this, this project succeed with uses that families can enjoy together and all ages. So I'm working right now with IT to get that survey results together, to put some nice materials together for that strategic planning session in January. And then so from here, we'll have that on the 25th. That will help us shape what the RFP, the Request for Proposals, that will become, and that will be posted in February. And then hopefully, we will choose that developer sometime late spring, beginning of summer. So, looking forward to seeing what the survey's results really say and speak to us.
Thank you so much, Ms. Combs. That was wonderful. Any other unfinished business this evening? I'm also complete. The next item on the agenda is new business. Do any council members have any new business they'd like to bring up this evening? All right, hearing none. The next item on the agenda is executive session. Let me go ahead and read this. Do I hear a motion to move to executive session under the authority of ORC 121.22G1 to consider the appointment, employment, dismissal, discipline, promotion, demotion, or compensation of a public employee or official, and under the authority of ORC 121.22G2 to consider the purchase of property for public purposes or for the sale of property at competitive bidding if premature disclosure of information would give an unfair competitive or bargaining advantage?
Motion.
Is there a second?
Second.
It has been properly moved and seconded. To move to executive session, we will proceed to vote. Ms. Skank, please call the roll.
Mayor Slavka?
Yes.
Mr. Lally?
Yes.
Mrs. Carter?
Yes.
Mr. West?
Yes.
Mr. Horn?
Yes.
Of the yeses have it, the motion passes. Council will now move to executive session.
Okay, we are on. Do we have a motion to return to open session?
Motion.
Do we have a second?
Second.
It has been properly moved and seconded to return to open session. We will proceed to vote. Mrs. Skank, please call the roll.
Mr. Lally.
Yes.
Mrs. Carter.
Yes.
Mr. West.
Yes.
Mr. Horn.
Yes.
Mayor Slamka.
Yes. Council will now return to open session. Next for council, is there a motion to terminate the acting city manager contract with Mr. Nathan Cahal effective December 31st, 2024?
Motion.
Is there a second?
Second.
It has been properly moved and seconded. Is there any discussion? We want to say that council is pleased with the work of Mr. Nathan Cahal. A yes vote here is in reference to the process of the city manager search itself and the next step in that process. We have a press release prepared that explains the choice well. Is there any further discussion? Hearing none, we will proceed to vote. Mrs. Skank, please call the roll.
Mrs. Carter. What, I'm sorry. I went blank. What are we doing right now?
This motion is to terminate the contract with Mr. Cahal effective December 31st.
Okay, yes. Mr. West.
Yes.
Mr. Horn.
Yes.
Mayor Slamka.
No.
Mr. Lally.
Yes.
The yeses have it and the motion passes. The next item for council, is there a motion to approve entering into the acting city manager contract with Ms. Ashley Combs effective January 1st, 2025?
Motion.
Is there a second?
Second.
It has been properly moved and seconded. Is there any discussion? Hearing none, we will proceed to vote. Mrs. Skank, please call the roll.
Mr. West.
Yes.
Mr. Horn.
Yes.
Mayor Slamka.
Yes.
Mrs. Carter.
Yes.
Mr. Lally.
Yes.
The yeses have it and the motion passes. This concludes the regular city council meeting for Middletown, Ohio, December 17th, 2024, at 10:34 PM. This meeting is adjourned until Tuesday, January 7th, 2024, at 5:30 PM in these chambers for our next regular city council meeting. We wish you an excellent new year. Thank you and good night.